...would be opened and closed. Applicant with any. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to call the December 10th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. Before we get into the agenda, we'll do a quick introduction, starting off to my right.
Brian Cooper.
Clyde Esbry.
Charlotte Douglas, City Commissioner.
Joseph Murphy, Director of Planning.
Josh Markham, City Attorney's Office.
Jim Ellison.
And I am Woody Gontina, the Vice Chairperson, serving in the chairperson's absence tonight. Before we get started, are there any changes or revisions to the agenda? Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to look at it.
I do have a question. What did we decide about? We had a discussion last month about a couple of different possible ordinance changes, lot size and adult uses. Are we as staff prepared to move forward with that discussion tonight? Do we think we have time on the agenda to do it? What are our wishes here?
Staff has been doing some research. We don't have anything to present to you tonight, so something in the near future, but time has been consumed by some other items, and so we don't have anything prepared for you for tonight's agenda.
So do you want us to submit our notes or comments to you separately, so you can assemble them into your ultimate report?
That would be acceptable, sure.
Okay.
You can always do that.
Right, but, okay, thank you.
All right, seeing nothing else, we'll move to our first item, which is Agenda Item Two, Approval of the Minutes. Hopefully, you all had a chance to read them. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by...
Mr. Cooper.
Second.
Support either.
Support.
Seconded by Mr. Esbry. Any discussion? Let's call for a voice vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've approved some minutes. I'm assuming I need to sign something, right? Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is, I remember, three, public comment for non-agenda items. We value everyone's opinions. We invite anyone from the public that's here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda tonight to please come forward, state your address, your name and address, and you have three minutes. I see a hand right here in front. Please go forward.
Good evening. My name is Trish Oliver. I'm a longtime Royal Oak resident. Tonight, I wanted to speak to the project at 505 South Lafayette. I believe this is another preview of what every Royal Oak resident can expect when the new master plan is adopted, because the new plan completely disrespects and ignores the needs of seniors and the disabled in terms of providing adequate parking, including handicap parking. Please note that seniors don't embrace bikes, scooters, or buses as a primary means of transportation, and will continue to rely on their cars. The remedy is for the Planning Commission to send this back to the ZBA for reconsideration per statute, MCL 125.3604, which states that the ZBA can reverse its own ruling, and I quote, "The zoning board of appeals may reverse or affirm wholly or partly or modify the order, requirement, decision, or determination, and may issue or direct the issuance of a permit." Before the ZBA makes a decision, they should have the older adult advisory board weigh in. In addition, the Planning Commissioner, Jim Ellison, who is Oakland County's Chief of Older Adult Services, should consult perhaps with Dave Coulter and Dave Woodward, who are his supervisors at Oakland County, and see if this is consistent with Oakland County's policies. Because this is so important, and the Planning Commission's approval tonight will be the final one before this project goes forward, since it's not a PUD, and therefore doesn't need to go to the City Commission, perhaps the City Commission could also weigh in to confirm what their true policies are regarding seniors and handicap parking. Also, the Disabled American Veterans, who have a headquarters in Royal Oak, would probably be interested of the ZBA meeting and this issue, and all other organizations that are truly concerned about the best interests of seniors and disabled people. I was concerned that the city staff's memo about the project didn't outline the state law that does allow for reversing the decision. We at Protect Royal Oak, our grassroots, nonprofit, nonpartisan group, nonprofit, nonpartisan group defending neighborhoods, please support us by going to our website, protectroyaloke.com. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak, please come up. Off your hands. And just as a reminder, this public comment period is for non-agenda items, so if you wish to speak about something that is not on the agenda, please feel free. You will have an opportunity to speak on the agenda items later on during those topics.
Hi, I'm Alex Morford. I live at 503 West Sunnybrook. I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to the new master plan and more administrative approval of housing projects. In particular, I don't think folks, I think folks who don't need parking shouldn't have to pay for their developer to build parking. You know, we have, I want lots of housing everywhere in Royal Oak, so that people can pick what's best for them. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on a non-agenda item? Going once, twice. Please introduce yourself, and you've got three minutes.
Nancy Poprovsky, Concerned Citizen. I've been an activist since I was three, starting when I picked up worms off the driveway so they wouldn't dry out in the sun. I rode them on the back of my tricycle and placed them in the garden and saved them. This is my nature, just like I'm always advocating for old, mature trees from being killed for development. And now, I'm advocating for old, mature seniors and the handicapped from being discriminated against at 505 Lafayette. 505 proposes to have no parking on site for 81 units. This means any mobility-challenged citizens, seniors, children with parents carrying groceries or moving furniture, et cetera, to live there in the building will have to park across the street in the public parking structure. How will these citizens get to the building? During bad weather, or not at all because they're disabled, or the parking structure is full? The public parking structure is not exclusive. It's for everyone, the college, retail, stagecrafters, anyone visiting Royal Oak, et cetera. The fifth apartments across the street accommodate all their residents with one parking spot. Why should 505 Lafayette get privileges when the underprivileged need parking? This is an outrage with no compassion. Is this the new Royal Oak? I hope not. Build, and they will come, but not for the handicapped and the seniors? Judith Humans, an American disability rights activist and special advisor to President Obama for international disability rights, said, "Disability only becomes a tragedy when society fails to provide the things we need to lead our lives." Reflecting on the holidays and the famous Christmas carol with Scrooge and handicapped Tiny Tim, bah humbug to this project without onsite parking. ZBA, change your vote. I believe it's allowed, like Scrooge changed his ways and helped Tiny Tim, and bless us all, everyone. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, then move on to item number four, which is new business, and the first Agenda Item 4A, and I will turn it over to Mr. Murphy.
This site's located on the west side of North Alexander Avenue, just north of East 11 Mile Road, and all the commercial businesses that front on 11 Mile Road. It's separated from those businesses by a 16-foot-wide public alley. It's Zone One Family Residential, and it contains a single-family home. The petitioner is proposing to demolish the existing home and to construct two separate buildings, and we'll take a look at the drawing to illustrate that. It'll be a two-story building closer to east, excuse me, closer to North Alexander, and that two-story building will contain one two-bedroom unit. It's separated from a building on the backside of the property. It's a three-story building that contains two one-bedroom units. And as you can see from the rendering, there are six parking spaces underneath the three-story building. Since there are three units, the zoning ordinance requires two parking spaces per unit, they're providing the exact number of parking spaces that's required under the ordinance. This PUD request would result in an amendment to the zoning, the map, which is in the city's zoning ordinance. So the Planning Commission needs to review the specific criteria that's in the zoning ordinance when reviewing the PUD request, and the petitioner has provided a written statement that they believe addresses the criteria that are established in the ordinance with regard to PUDs. The future land use map shows this area, rather this property and the properties to the north, as medium-density, single-family residential. And again, the petitioner is proposing what will result in three units on the site. North Alexander is a local street. It's at the lowest tier of the different levels of streets, and it's certainly intended to handle a relatively low traffic volume. If this site were in, if this development were in the correct zoning designation, the multifamily zoning district, it would require three, excuse me, three units would require 12,000 square feet of lot area, and this site is certainly less than that, at a little over 5,000 square feet in area. The building closest to the side street, North Alexander, is set back 15 feet from the front property line. You can see that the adjacent, single-family dwelling to the north has a front yard set back of 31 feet, so it sticks out in front of that dwelling. The building to the rear has a small setback, eight feet, I believe, from the west property line, and both of the buildings are set back five feet from the north property line, which is the property line directly adjacent to the single-family home. Between the building and that north property line, the petitioner proposes to have a row, as you can see on the drawing, of eight-foot arborvitae coniferous shrubs as screening. The west facade of, I'll hover over, of this building, excuse me, the north facade, has a perforated screen. That is the material that the petitioner is proposing on the ground level. You'll see that the parking space is pulled in under the building. Their headlights would shine through the perforated screen, and that's why the petitioner has chosen to put, to plant arborvitae. All of these parking spaces are accessed via that 16-foot-wide public alley. The driveway, if you will, for accessing those six parking spaces, it spans 66 and a half feet. The ordinance defines a maximum of 25 feet. There is a refuse enclosure at the very end of the public, off the alley, on the west side of the property. It should be shifted to the, slightly to the east. There's a possible easement there, and maybe the petitioner can speak to that, but it may need to be pushed slightly in, and it certainly needs to be constructed of some more durable materials, as we noted in our, in our list of proposed contingencies. There are five new trees, which are proposing 18 inches in diameter, and there are some shortcomings on the drawings with regard to the trees that are on the site, their species, and the fate of those trees with this development, so I think that's appropriate to ask the petitioner. There are numerous deviations from zoning ordinance provisions, which are listed in the table in the report, and if favorable, the Planning Commission may approve this in a prelim, as preliminary PUD, or if you believe it's appropriate, you can, you can approve it as the final PUD and send it on to the City Commission for, the City Commission to conduct a reading, a first reading, which, again, because it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. This time, I will ask the applicant, if they are here, to come up and introduce themselves and introduce your project. Before you get into that real quick, I just wanted to do a quick reminder. We are short on planning commissioners this evening, so I just want to inform you that since the affirmative vote would require a simple majority, there is the possibility that you could elect to postpone to a time when we do have a full commission. That is your option. You'll have to make that determination after the public comment, so just want to make you aware of that, and we can discuss it later.
Thank you very much. My name is Dennis Cowan with Plunkett Cooney, and I represent Edmasa LLC, which is the applicant, and with me here this evening is the owner and principal of Edmasa, that's Ed Metko, and also our architect of record, Jim Schneider, based here in Royal Oak on Center Street. Mr. Metko owns the Village Grill property and 111 Alexander, the property that the proposal is before you this evening. Ed purchased the properties before 11 Mile was fashionable, at a time when some parts of it were a little rough, and the Hotel Royal Oak was under prior management. But there has been a renaissance of 11 Mile, which we all welcome, and it's mostly been because of the, both the public and private investment that has taken place. And in fact, in 2015, Mr. Metko totally renovated the Village Grill Restaurant, which is a very well-regarded restaurant in our community, and added to that increase in positive visibility on 11 Mile. So he is someone who is both invested in the community and maintained his properties. The house on 111 North Alexander was built in 1937, and quite frankly, has seen its better days. You will note that it's a very unique piece of property. First, the house, since it has been built, has always been orientated towards the alley, towards the south, and towards the parking lot. It also is unique because it's bordered on the southern and western border by commercial property. Many properties along that strip have one commercial neighbor, but this one has two, both the hotel and, again, the parking lot and the Village Grill Restaurant. So when Mr. Metko was looking at options of what might be done to replace this aging rental home, he looked at several options, and working with Mr. Schneider, came to the conclusion that the best plan was the one that we are presenting. The likelihood of that being an attractive location for a new, single-family home is rather low, we believe, because it borders right on a parking lot. The access would be, have to be to a garage through the alleyway, and it would be fully visible and adjacent to both the back of the restaurant, the dumpster, and the parking lot. So, Mr. Schneider has provided what we believe is a very thoughtful and groundbreaking plan for what he's designated or calls a pocket multifamily, which is a very small-scale development and very low-key. So we also think one of the benefits of this property and the way it's going to be constructed is it will provide a permanent buffer for the neighborhood, which it does not exist today, for, against the backdrop of the Village Grill, the parking lot, and the dumpster. We did have a neighborhood meeting. We used the city's mailing list. We did have five residents attend. It was a positive exchange, and actually, there were a couple compliments, including from the owner of the property directly to the north, that is a rental home, and seeing the increased investment in the 11 Mile area. We are using the PUD vehicle. In analyzing this, we felt this was the best way to go, because it would include multiple hearings before two different bodies, and also would result in a development agreement where what we say we're going to build, or what Edmasa LLC says they're going to build, will be placed in writing, and there'll be an opportunity for all to comment. The other, I think, critical feature is that not only do we believe we meet at least the draft master plan for the future with what I called the middle market in the letter, missing middle housing that I talked about in my letter, but also the current master plan. In the preamble to the one-family residential zoning ordinance, it says that "in addition to the dwellings permitted in this zone, there are certain non-residential uses which may be compatible with and supportive of a medium-density residential environment." We're not even a medium density. We're a very small-density environment, which could go, and we believe fits nicely on this property. So both with the current master plan and the future master plan, we believe we are in compliance. And we can talk more about us meeting those requirements later on in this, in question and answer. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Schneider, who is the architect of record, to come up and talk about the project and some of its excellent features. Thank you very much.
A couple quick corrections, Joseph. The two-story building in the back actually has two two-bedroom units, and it, the one, the two-story building in the front is a single-bedroom unit. And also, the drawings that you're showing don't reflect the latest ones that we sent to Doug. So we increased the west setback to 13 feet. We identified the trees, the, we're actually, I think the DBH on the trees is, current trees is 18 inches, and, yeah, it's, I'm sorry, we're providing 18 inches, and the current is 17.5. We're removing one tree from the site. We're leaving one tree on the site, so just want to make that point. As Dennis said, we looked at this long and hard to decide, you know, what was a reasonable use for the property. This project, we specifically designed as two buildings, so it broke down the mass of the project, created some space and light in between the buildings, created some outdoor space for the tenants. One of the benefits we see from going the route of the planned unit development is there's benefits to the community that wouldn't be required if we did this as a single-family house. You know, we're talking about 20% increase in water usage efficiency, 25% increase in exterior insulation. We're capturing the stormwater that wouldn't be required for this property, regardless whether it was multiple units or a single unit. So we're doing a lot of things here that we think benefit the community as a whole. We've, hopefully, you've got our letter outlining, you know, we've looked at renewable content, recyclable materials, all of those things that go into a building that make a big difference. The north facade of the building is designed so there's minimal windows, offering privacy to the single-family house that's to the north. The, as Dennis pointed out, and Joseph pointed out, we have adequate parking, as required under the zoning ordinance. So I, you know, this really does fit in with what the master plan is talking about. It's providing housing options, reducing energy use, natural means of water management, use of native landscaping and climate tolerant landscaping, walkability, given the location of this property. There is a drawing in there, Joseph, towards the end, where we did sort of a overlay. Go one more, I think. So that sort of magenta-colored shadow there gives you an idea of how big a single-family house you could put on this piece of property, with no variances, no input, wouldn't have to do any of the conservation things with regard to the thing, the items that we're proposing under the PUD. So I think this really is a, is a well-thought-out project for this particular site. It's going to offer some privacy to the, to the single-family to the north. It's also a good transition from that commercial to the single-family to, to the, to the north. This project reminds me of, 25 years ago, I sat on the steering committee for the current master plan, and 25 years ago, we were designing the townhomes on Troy Street, which turned into a very controversial project. One of the things that got pushed during that master plan concept was this idea of some transitional zones. Everything became so political that by the time we did the zoning ordinance, a lot of that got left out, and we ended up with a multifamily zoning ordinance that really proposes zoning that is, mimics more a suburban community or greenfield development. That's why so many, that's why we ended up with the PUD now, and why so many of these projects look at a PUD, because our zoning ordinance does not fit the character nor the context of the city. And as we believed 25 years ago, when we did the townhomes on Troy Street, that was a transitional piece of property. It offered a transition between the more intense commercial, the residential behind it. We purposely broke that project apart into six individual buildings, rather than one large building with bigger setbacks on the side. We created courtyards in between, and I can't tell you how many times in the last 25 years people have said, "Why isn't there more of that around Royal Oak?" And I said, "Well, because the zoning ordinance made it virtually impossible to do those kinds of transitions." So again, that's why we believe this is a great solution for this site, so be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
I guess I'll bring it back to this side for a second, if any of the commissioners do have questions.
I have a couple of quick ones. So one of which, it sounds like you've changed the plan, so with regards to trees and setback and things of that nature. So in looking at what I'm seeing is you've got a proposed 11-foot setback on the back per the write-up. The drawings that were submitted is an eight-foot setback, and now you're saying it's 13.
It's 13, correct, on the west.
So my concern with that being, you've got a 30-foot tall structure in the back of the building. Those are primary lines from DTE that aren't insulated, so I think even at 13 feet, you're pretty close to being...
Close, but I think we're outside the...
Has anybody consulted with DTE about that?
We have, but tried to get DTE to call you back.
Okay, so you've also taken, so now that setback has gone from eight feet to 13 feet.
Correct.
Where's that five feet coming from on the property?
It's in between, it's in the patio.
So you're taking out a little courtyard area that's in the middle?
Yep.
The existing tree that you're leaving, is that the one in the front corner?
Yes, in the front corner, correct.
That's kind of split and hacked by DTE, as we like to?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then you're also proposing these five new trees, which are going to go directly underneath the power lines that are probably not going to live.
Those trees are actually, the species that we provided is, you know, it's a conical tree, so at its mature age, it has a spread of about five feet, so it's got, it would have a two-and-a-half-foot spread on one half of the trunk, so it's, and it's widest at the bottom, narrow at the top, so it was pretty purposeful, well-specified.
Okay, because I know the communication lines on the bottom are super wide.
Correct.
And then it kind of tapers in, so you're going to basically take the heart of the middle of that tree out.
Yep.
Okay. And then explain to me a little bit about the, the energy efficiency of what you're utilizing. utilizing as a litmus above and beyond, like Michigan Energy Code for insulation.
Well, the Energy Code, because these are three single-family homes, basically. They'd be done under the single-family residential code, not, not the commercial code. So the criteria is an R20. We're, beyond that, we're doing a continuous R5 on the exterior of the buildings, which is not required, taking it to a, actually it'd be, it would take it to an R26 when it was done. So it's a 25% increase over what's required in the code.
Okay. What about water conservation? What was the...
Water conservation, we're going to follow...
I saw a comment about lead silver.
Lead silver, which is approximately a 20% savings in water usage.
Over what is the balance?
Over standard, you know, no, no savings.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions? All right. Thank you. You can have a seat. We're going to open the public comment for this agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this topic right here in the front? Can you introduce yourself? You've got three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Trish Oliver, longtime resident of Royal Oak. This project at 111 North Alexander is a preview of what every Royal Oak resident can expect when the new master plan is adopted because the new plan disrespects nearby residents and single-family homes. This is just another series of, another of a series of projects that should never have been approved that encroach into our single-family neighborhoods. Since the minimum lot size in Royal Oak is 50-foot, this 40-foot lot is a non-conforming use and should remain as it is with only one single-family home constructed on it. Further, the requirements to grant approval for a PUD as outlined in 77098C of the zoning ordinance, 1B state, quote, "A non-conforming use shall, to a material extent, be rendered more conforming or less offensive to the zoning district in which it is situated. It is impossible for anyone to conclude that increasing this non-conforming four-foot, 40-foot lot from one unit to three units can satisfy this requirement. This project should be not denied based on that alone. We, the concerned citizens of Protect Royal Oak, are a grassroots, nonpartisan, nonprofit group defending neighborhoods. Please support us by going to our website, protectroyaloke.com. Thank you."
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this topic over on the right?
Hi, my name is John Kalinsky. I live at 112 North Alexander Avenue, so I'm right across the street from the development. I attended the presentation last week with the architect. I was very impressed with what they presented. I think they put in considerable thought into integrating this project with the neighborhood. I'm not really looking forward to the construction, but that would happen if there's a single-family home on the lot and I really have no objections overall to the project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yep, right over here.
Hi, Alex Morford, 503 West Sunnybrook. I also support this project. When I was very young, my parents rented a, a small duplex. I shared a room with my older sister and then when my younger sister was born, they bought a bunk bed and slid it next to the crib. Small multifamily like where I used to live in this development is really important for communities. My parents were both math educators, right? You know, they rented for a while before they were, before they were ready to buy a home. I think it's really important that, you know, these small developments, that we encourage them in Royal Oak. I'm excited for the master plan. Hopefully things like this will be administratively approved once we finalize that. So thank you and please join me in support.
Anyone else wish to comment in the green?
Hi, my name is Katie Wook. I live at 1623 North Pleasant Street and I'm here on behalf of Yumby Oakland County. I love this proposal. I think this is a really creative solution for a non-conforming lot abutting businesses. This would be two more homes than are there right now. This backs up to a very busy area and this feels like a great way to introduce some gentle density and provide a permanent buffer for the neighborhood, as the developer said. Given the parking lot and the alley, it doesn't seem like there will be much increased traffic on Alexander from this unit and missing middle housing helps everyone get moved toward our housing goals without the tall towers that are very controversial. This is taking up basically the same footprint as one of the huge single-family homes that are going in all over town and in fact, right across the street from this house. And I love this location. This is a walkable location near downtown and I think this will be a great project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this, right there in the black sweater?
Let me start by saying I do not live in this neighborhood, but I have a great concern that by, that this will establish a precedent for other neighborhoods. Unlike other PUDs, this property is in a single-family zone neighborhood and despite what they're saying, the existing master plan and the new master plan are, it doesn't conform with it and the new one is proposing keeping it on main streets. This is not on a main street and if you go up and down 11 Mile and other main streets, you will see there's lots of businesses, lots of alleys where there's one single-family home that adjoins it, not three. So you, you are being charged in the documents tonight to consider evidence should document the applicant cannot receive a reasonable return on investment through developing the property with one or more of the principal permitted and special land uses under the current zoning. Build a house. One single house you, you can, you can do. The requested zone shall not create an isolated and unplanned spot zone. It does. There's, there's no question. And objectives and policies of the master plan, as I stated, aren't met. It doesn't meet the existing master plan or what, what's been proposed. So I'm wholly opposed to this. I'm, I'm glad that the people across the street are happy with it and in the neighborhood, but I don't want to set a precedent for other neighborhoods. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this topic? Start right in the middle.
Jeffrey Houston, 212 North Altadena. First of all, I'd like to take the time to thank you for your service. I know this is a volunteer position for many of you. Thank you for doing so. I'd like to thank the petitioner as well. I frequently, his restaurant is right around the corner. It's very nice. Appreciate the upgrades. It's been a great addition to an improving 11 Mile that we have lived in, close to for nearly 35 years. I do have a couple of concerns. First, Mr. Cowan said that some, a letter was sent out to residents. I live within a stone's throw of that house and I'd never received anything, not that I, that's required. I don't know what the requirements were, but I do have some concerns with this project. I certainly have a concern with the setback and how close this project would be to Alexander and have problems with other buildings that are, that are close to 11 Mile in traffic, pulling out into 11 Mile and accidents that might be created with, with a dwelling with a setback shorter than the normal, what is normal. The hardship that was created, I understand and he would like to maximize his investment in this property, but as the, as someone said earlier, one of the residents, they built a house across the street behind the party store and that house sold for nearly $700,000 in 2022 and is valued at close to $800,000 now. So there is value in that land and so to just submit it as non-valuable land without having medium density, small density, low density, or whatever it is, is just some of my concerns and I thank you for taking the time to listen.
Anyone else wish to speak on this? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. At this point, would like to again remind the applicant that because we don't have a full commission, now would be the time. You'd need to let us know if you want to continue to move forward with us taking action tonight or if you'd like us to postpone. There's no guarantee if it was postponed that you, you'd get a full commission at the next meeting, but we do want to offer you that opportunity to make a decision if you want to move forward today or not. So with that, I guess at this point, we bring it back to this side of the table for discussion, correct? Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we often, after public comment, do allow the petitioner to answer questions or address issues that have been raised. Do we want to offer them that opportunity here?
I think that's appropriate.
Thank you.
So yeah, if the petitioner would like to come back to the podium and either summarize your presentation or respond to anything you heard during public comment, now would be the opportunity.
Well, first, we want to thank those who came and spoke. We even welcome the criticisms because part of what this process is about is the dialogue and the exchange of ideas, but we are most thankful for those who spoke in favor, particularly the neighbor right across the street because he'll be one of the two properties most influenced or affected by this property. I would just say that this is a very unique property. I would never propose something like this in the middle of a neighborhood or anything like that. It's what I would call what's normally referred to as an edge property because it's right on the border of, or on the residential-commercial border. And as a result, I think there's an opportunity to do something along the lines that has been proposed, which meets needs of, these are, these are small units. They're going to be affordable units. We believe that there'll be a positive impact because of the barrier that it's going to create and the orientation of two of the three units and all the parking is away from the neighborhood. So as a result, we think that the, all negative impacts have been minimized and we believe we do meet the PUD criteria. The PUD is a process that's allowed for all districts within the city. There's no restriction. There's no size requirement. There's no density requirement. It's something that is offered with the opportunity for the applicant to meet the criteria, which we believe we have, and then move forward with the project granted, if all approvals are granted. So if there's anything else you would like to ask us at this time, either myself or Mr. Schneider will, during your, your dialogue, we'll be glad to answer those questions.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to this side and if there's any questions from the commissioners' discussion. No questions? Well, if there's no questions, then I guess...
Let me, let me start the discussion off.
Yeah, I need to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me start the conversation off. I think it's a unique use of this property. It is kind of a unique piece of property because it, it basically fronts onto the parking lot of, of the Village Grill. And I know we probably have that in other parts of the city, but I think what they've created here is kind of a nice transition from the 11 Mile business back into the residential with a kind of semi-different type of residential area. It's, it's, it's going to create, create a buffer, if you will, between the parking lot and the, the neighbors to the north. So I like this, I like this proposal, but I do want to hear what my colleagues have to say.
I think in reviewing this, it just, my concerns is looking at the, the front setback is you've got a pretty sizable two-story that's 15 feet off the front property line, which doesn't really fit with anything else within that neighborhood. You know, as far as the buffer, I think, you know, one of the examples I saw as I was getting my car washed today and over at Tommy's, he says, "You've got apartment buildings that are facing," which is, I think that's owned as a single-family as I look at the map, "but those are facing the alleyway and you've got multifamily before you get into the single-family homes just south of Normandy behind Tommy's Express." I think it's, I think it's a good concept. My concerns are just the, the size of maybe this, my gut tells me this is a two-unit, not a three-unit to kind of fit the lot a little bit better.
Mr. Rousby.
Mr. Scott Hennig, I really don't have any questions. I've really, quite frankly, in the last 72 hours, done a deeper dive into this particular proposal than I've probably done on a proposal in quite some time. And at the end of the day and before I speak positively or negatively, I think it's probably appropriate that I introduce a motion since the board does seem to be a little bit on the quiet side. Are you prepared to accept a motion?
I would like to have the option for a little bit more conversation before a motion.
No, that's fine. I mean, I can put...
Put the motion on the table and discuss the motion.
If you're prepared to make the motion, we have to accept, you know, the making of the motion.
No, but I'm willing to wait if there are other, you know, if there's more input at the table, I'm more than willing to wait.
Yeah. Proper form dictates that we put a motion on the table and discuss the motion. You don't...
No, no, I understand that.
We formally have allowed discussion before the motion, but if we're going to get technical here, we put a motion on the table and people are ready to discuss it, they'll discuss it.
It would be a main motion that's subject to discussion and is subject to amendment and anything else, so it doesn't change much.
All right. Well, my motion would be to deny the rezoning from one-family residential to planned unit development.
All right. So there's a motion on the table to deny the request. Is there a second? With no second, I believe we, the motion...
It dies.
Dies, yeah.
All right. Then I will withhold comments.
All right, well...
If he is going, I'm making the motion to approve this.
All right, there's a, a motion to approve on the table. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Douglas. And now is there any more discussion? Mr. Rousby.
Well, the motion maker and the seconders should give priorities.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, this is, there are, I'm, I'm like a 51-49 on this. One of the things that I, I think is an issue is that the conditions of the, the PUD say that the materials in the building should be comparable to those that it's adjacent to. And here we have metal cladding next to a neighborhood that is all either clavered or stone or brick or masonry. And yet it's very handsome. It's very attractive. And so I, I've gone back and forth over the suitability of the materials versus the fact that we're bringing what I think is an attractive and contemporary design to this site. I'm not worried much about the front yard setback because the setback of the adjacent commercial building on the corner of 11 Mile and Alexander is right up to the sidewalk. So in, in terms of visibility of people coming and going and getting up to 11 Mile, I don't really think that that's an issue. I, I, I do see advantages to the, the form of this building shielding the neighborhood from the activity of the Village Grill. I eat there. I mean, you know, people, cars are in and out all the time. It's a very busy place. Got the hotel next door, same thing, busy stuff. And I just think that this is, at the end of the day, will be of use and will be a credit to our city.
Mr. Rousby.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So I quite frankly, don't have a whole lot of consternation when it comes to the concept of what's being proposed in and of itself. What I have consternation with is the vehicle being used to achieve this ends. At the end of the day, and I'm going to get a little wordy, I'm going to ramble back and forth. Please accept my apologies out there. We do not have anywhere in the city, a single-family lot that has been rezoned to a PUD anywhere. Now, we do have an example of an entire street in Dorchester where Lincoln used to be, where that whole neighborhood was built. And if we look at examples of the PUDs that we have, if you look at the Imagine, the Roy, the Billings Building, the Skylow Marketplaces and others, they are predominantly located in our main commercial corridors. They're on Main Street, they're on Washington, they're on Fourth Street, they're on 11 Mile. I think taking a PUD and, and placing it into the neighborhood, particularly a single-family zone, is, is a bad precedent to set. More importantly, because this plan could go through the standard zoning process, they could ask for a variance, they could go in from the ZBA and the ZBA could give them their blessing up or down. I think avoiding those standard protocols is just bad, bad policy, but more importantly, it specifically says in the city's write-up, "Are there recognizable and material benefits to the city that would otherwise be unfeasible or unlikely to be achieved without the PUD?" I do not see these overwhelming community benefits in any way, shape, or form. So I don't think that this project rises to the level where we should grant such a unique and frankly unheard-of PUD in our city.
Any other comments? I have... I have some if there isn't any.
So along the same lines, I'm always very sensitive to how the PUD process is being used. I happen to think, you know, that this project and what's been designed is actually a pretty unique concept that they put in here. The issue that I have, though, is very similar to Mr. Esbry's concerns. You know, planning development is really intended for properties that can't reasonably be developed otherwise due to unique site constraints, size, shape, those sorts of things. So from that respect, I do believe that this is actually how the process should be used to try to bring a unique project to a site that has unique constraints. The issue that I have is it -- one of the caveats of that is if it's not reasonably developable otherwise. In this particular case, it is a single-family zoning right now at the end of a single-family neighborhood. I understand it's a narrow lot, but it's the petitioner's choice to go through the PUD process. I agree with Mr. Esbry in that there's other avenues that this potential project could have gone through. At the same time, it could also be very well be developed as a single-family project as well, a single-family lot. So the choice to go through the PUD process comes with a fairly high bar with providing community benefits. And what's been cited as community benefits beyond the fact that it's providing housing, I think, are inadequate. I don't have the detail or necessarily believe that what's been proposed for the energy efficiency features constitute a community benefit in this regard. The stormwater requirements that they're alluding to, they're essentially building multifamily projects, so in my mind would border on a requirement anyways. So from my perspective, while I think the concept's unique and it's, you know, by all intents and purposes, the appropriate avenue to look at PUDs to try to develop unique projects on unique sites, I don't think the other side of it in terms of the community benefits is there for me.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about community benefits because the city commission directed stat -- wrote, dictated, a series of many benefits that projects may bring to the city. And those are desirable, and certainly we, in our minds, will consider them as projects come to us, but no developer is required to provide community benefits. And I worry that sometimes that we place too much emphasis on that when it's not required. And for a project this small, I mean, three units, I mean, what kind of community developments can we reasonably expect that have any sort of meaningful impact whatsoever? So again, yes, we will consider those, and these are negotiations. If it's conditional rezoning, you know, we obviously, we can't demand anything. They may voluntarily bring us benefits, but we can't demand them. And in the PUD, it is a negotiation. I just want to be wary about hanging our hat too much on that as a condition.
Mr. Esbry.
And I think Ms. Douglas raises a very good argument for the fact that this project, given the size and scope of what it's proposing, probably should have just used standard approval processes and not gone for the PUD designation.
Okay, let me give it a shot here. Again, I'm still in support of this. It's a small lot, it's a 40-foot lot, it'd be hard to put a, you know, a comparable single-family home on that lot and still get all the setbacks and everything we're talking about. I mean, it could be done across the street, but if we're looking for community benefits, one of our goals in the community is to increase population, okay? Now, we're going to take a single-family home, if I'm not mistaken, is not occupied right now. It's used as a storage for the restaurant and other things. But this would give us six more or three, what, three more? Three more units of family moving in. And again, looking at the aesthetics of the building, it is different from the homes on Alexander. But the reality is, the biggest part of this building faces 11 Mile Road, and it's not out of place for that facade on 11 Mile Road. So I said before, it's a good transition. If you'll see the tiny, the single house on Alexander, which will match the building behind it, but the massive visual aspect is the big two-unit that face 11 Mile Road. And I think it fits in perfectly with what we're trying to accomplish with freshening up 11 Mile Road and getting some housing in. I'm still supportive of this concept. And going through the PUD process, the PUD process is a good process because it allows us to do things we're tied into if we can't, if we don't have the ability to negotiate for PUD. So it's probably one of the reasons, even though it's a small project, it still needs some tweaks to make it work.
Any other comments?
So there was a...
Yeah, I -- it's occupied by the people that work at the restaurant.
We're on the side of the table right now.
I talked to Dora the other day.
There's a motion, there was a motion made and seconded. For clarification, was the motion to provide preliminary approval so that they would need to come back to you with something that you've identified that needs to be resolved before it goes to the city commission? Or was that a motion of approval as a final PUD and now it would move on to the city commission?
Mine was for a final PUD.
Okay.
I agree.
Any other discussion on the motion that's on the table? Nope. All right, with that, I think we'll go to the vote. I think we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Cooper.
No, sorry. I'm a no.
Yes?
Yes.
And I'm a no. So with that, the motion fails.
There was already a motion to deny.
Sorry?
There was already a motion.
There was already a motion to deny, which also failed. Right, so at this point, no action has been taken, right?
Do you see any other reason?
It was a lack of approval equal failure, right?
Well, the original motion didn't get a second, so it failed.
Correct.
So there was no vote on that one.
Are you looking for motions to deny? Can I reintroduce that? Are we good?
I don't believe it's necessary.
It's not necessary.
No, it just, it simply requires at least three affirmative votes in order to approve it, and it failed to obtain three affirmative votes.
So procedurally, we're done with that agenda item? Okay, yeah, well, I guess we are moving on to the next agenda item, which is item 4A, Special Land Use and Site Plan, SP 24-12-17. Mr. Murphy.
This site is located on the north side of 14 Mile Road near the intersection of Coolidge. It's two separate properties under common ownership with common use elements, so it's got a common drive approach off of 14 Mile Road and a common drive aisle that accesses all the parking spaces. The site is zoned general industrial, and it was most recently occupied by an awning and a glass, custom glass manufacturers. The petitioner is proposing, or they're seeking, rather, they're seeking special land use approval and site plan approval in order to renovate both buildings for an automobile repair facility. There are two access points to this property. There's a two-way drive along 14 Mile Road and there's a two-way drive along firmly the side street. And they have access to the internal drive aisle, which gets to the parking spaces, and it gets to the overhead door where the vehicles, there are service space for the vehicles. The petitioner is proposing to remove, if you've seen images of the site, it's got two areas where there are large fabric enclosures, and the petitioner is proposing to remove both of those, and they're on the, they're behind the, one of the buildings on the site. So the petition, following the public hearing, the planning commission may approve, approve with relevant conditions or deny the special land use request, and there certainly are basis of determination, there's a basis of determination highlighted in the ordinance and in the report that you should consider. And then, once the special land use request is voted upon, you can consider the site plan. And the planning division has listed some specific contingencies in the report with regard to that there'll be no outdoor storage of vehicles for sale or for sale at combining the properties, because again, they have common elements that are needed in order for the site to function. Alternatively, the planning, the petitioner could seek variances from the provisions. Again, if we split the property, there are two properties right now, sort of down the middle, down the drive aisle off of 14 Mile Road. If they're separate properties, then they don't meet the provision of the width for the driveway, the width for the drive approach, the width for the drive aisle. Combining those properties solves any future issues. One that comes to mind is on 11 Mile Road where there was a shared driveway, no recorded easement between the two. There was a fight amongst the property owners, and there were enormous concrete blocks that went up down that central drive approach, and neither site could get to the use, ended up selling, it was a complete nightmare. So this avoids something like that. And these are under common ownership, there's no reason for the petitioner not to combine them. The last suggested contingency that we have is, and I'm going to go to the Google Street View image to show this best. There's some front landscaping on 14 Mile Road, and the property line is just in from the public sidewalk. You'll see that there are some small landscape islands, and we're suggesting that the planning commission require that those landscape islands be extended to the sidewalk so that there's no hard-surfaced area, there'd be no area for someone to park and block the view of someone coming down the sidewalk as what could occur right now. And that's a suggested contingency.
And is that true of both buildings?
Yes, correct. That's correct.
Any else?
Nope.
All right. With that, I'd like to invite the applicant, if they are here, to come up and present their project. Good evening, please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Frank Frager. I'm the architect and the applicant. I'm with Catteray Architecture. We are, we applied for the project on behalf of Mr. Michael George, who's the owner, and Mr. Blinard Jarboe, who's the prospective tenant. So this project is proposing the reuse of the two existing buildings that are on the site. They are both basically concrete block buildings, light industrial-type buildings, which are well-suited for the tenant's use. I think the owner and their leasing agency have found a good potential tenant for this location. The type of business that they're proposing here is a auto repair facility, but I think it should be clarified or explained that it's not like a collision shop. This is a facility that works on higher-end automobiles, BMWs, Porsches, that kind of thing, and they primarily do, if I'm correct, engine repairs and brake work. So the types of cars that will be on the lot in the back area are not cars that have been in an accident or, you know, nice-looking cars that would be eventually screened from public view. And given what the type of work that they're doing here, it's, you know, we consider it kind of be pretty low-intensity use. It's certainly within the, we feel, within the required or allowed, you know, uses of this location, and certainly wouldn't be a detriment to what else is going on. I think there's a collision shop right adjacent to it, and pretty much all of the surrounding buildings are the same type of zoning use and same type of character building, kind of buildings built in the '60s and '70s of block and single-story buildings. So essentially, the buildings themselves are in pretty good condition, the site is generally in good condition, and so is the landscaping. So the owner and tenant are hoping to kind of reuse the buildings pretty much as-is. I don't think they've been vacant too long here, maybe a year or so. That I'm not sure of, but...
Just a few months.
Just a few months. So the goal here is to kind of get in there and, you know, just reuse these very simple buildings for a new use and kind of bring the site back to life with, you know, hopefully not too many other changes to the building. And I believe from the, from the planning report, I think there were maybe three items that were, that were under maybe concern from the planning point of view, and, you know, we're certainly happy to talk about those items. I think one of them was screening of the South Lot, which is basically the area behind the buildings, and there was an issue with the landscaping and an issue with potentially combining the two lots into one. So we can discuss those as you see fit.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to the side. Commissioner Douglas.
Is there a problem with combining the lots? Are there issues there?
Well, you know, I'll speak first and then the owner can speak on this as well. Certainly, it could be done. They do own both properties and foreseeably would do so in the future. While we recognize that potentially in the future, something could happen, I mean, who knows, maybe 20 years down the line or something, we don't really know, right? But the, one property could be sold off and potentially create a condition where one building has kind of trapped because it doesn't have a proper access to the site parking. But I think our concern is that right now, the, that request, I don't know if it has a lot of relevance for this project, and it's what kind of forced them to hire a civil engineer or do a lot combo, you know, there's an administrative and a cost that goes along with this request. And I think it's trying to solve a problem that doesn't currently exist in this project, nor has it existed for probably decades on this site. You know, I think we're hesitant to do that, you know, for something that could potentially be a future problem, but isn't a problem right now. Do you want to chime in? So this is the owner, this is Mr. George.
I purchased the buildings out, I'm sorry, Michael George, nice to meet everybody. I purchased the properties recently and bought them under the assumption they were two separate buildings and probably get two tenants. I was approached by Blinard, who owns Motor City Euro. I was, you know, thinking about, well, should, you know, he rent both buildings, should I do that or should I run separately? I went to see his facility, I was very impressed with his other facility in Farmington Hills, and I said, you know, "Let's go talk about it." We looked at the project, and he said, you know, "I could use both buildings because of the parking in between having the, one of the buildings more as a, where the people can come in, have coffee and wait for their cars, et cetera, and have one more for the workout area for the cars." And, you know, I said, "Okay, well, we can protect this by signing a lease for both buildings simultaneously," which would allow him use to the entire two properties. So I don't really see, unless you can give me a reason, I don't see any reason to combine them at this time, because it's advantage to me in the future if I ever want to use them separately. So I'm asking to go on with the project as-is, just because I think it's simply more logical.
So these in the past were owned, had different owners until you bought them?
Well, the, I don't know the history before the last owner, but it was one owner, I bought them together as, from one owner.
So, okay.
He was using both buildings, he was using one as manufacturing and one as storage.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, and just for some context, again, I don't know the full history of the lots, you know, if they've always been like this, but I can certainly say I went back and looked through the Google Earth history images going back to 1999, and clearly, this parking configuration has existed since then without really any problem. And, you know, going forward in the future, if there was ever an opportunity or, you know, for the owner to sell off one piece, they currently own both properties, they can always write a cross-access agreement and, you know, work out a shared parking agreement at that time. I don't think it would be in their benefit or the benefit to any future tenant for them to sell off one property and leave the other one stranded. So that's why I guess we're asking that, you know, maybe that step not be required at this point.
I've got a question for Mr. Murphy. Can you help us understand, in terms of additional variances that might be required, should they not combine parcels based on the site plan that they proposed? Can you highlight some of those? The example you gave about a shared driveway notwithstanding, are there other items that they would not be in compliance with without having a single parcel?
Yes. In the current configuration, the site lacks the minimum driveway width for a drive aisle of 20 feet. So the parking spaces on, and I'll just hover over the aerial photograph, there are parking spaces adjacent to the building on the west lot, and those are accessed at 90 degrees. There isn't a 20-foot distance between the edge of that parking space and the
The same thing can also be said for if this property wants to utilize access across the, utilize the driveway along Fernley, it wouldn't be able to do so. Historically, what we've run across in records are yes, these are two platted lots that you can see, lot 276 and 277. Perhaps they've been in common ownership for many years, so there hasn't been any issue in terms of cross access easements. One of those properties sells to a different owner. The owners come and approach each other. They want to have a shared access agreement for use of the, the drive aisle to get to the parking spaces on the east property, the parking spaces on the west site. They, historically, what we've seen is that property owners come to an informal agreement that's never recorded at the county because they don't want to prohibit their ability to sell or redevelop the property with now restricted easement. So they say, well, it's just kind of a gentleman's handshake where they have a, a written agreement that's signed, but it's never recorded, so it's never formalized. And then what happens is somebody comes along and wants to redevelop one of the sites with the building that sits right on where the drive aisle is and now they end up in conflict with one another and who do they always end up calling?
That's why you make the big question.
There you go. Or, or somebody puts a barrier across that, that shared air, access and it becomes a confrontational and unnecessary disagreement between property owners where there's now physical presence that renders the drive aisle and access to some of these portions useless.
So, but isn't that sort of a buyer beware thing? That is, if you're buying, you know, one of these two properties, don't you take that into consideration when you're making that decision?
One would hope that someone would do their due diligence in checking recorded documents and what have you, yes. But you'd be surprised.
Oh, no, I wouldn't, but, thank you.
Yes. And of course, some of it then comes to are vehicles and patrons able to access the site without traffic backing up? Some of the instances I was referring to, they become police matters, not only between the property owners arguing with each other, but because everything gets backed up, bottlenecked on to whatever street they're adjacent to. It, it does become a problem.
Well, thank you.
So another quick question I have is, so technically, in its current state, current configuration of the two separate lots, they're both technically non-conforming then, right now?
That's correct. So any chance that we have such as this to try and ameliorate the situation as we try and take advantage of it?
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Quick question. Joe, if they do combine the lots, in the future, they can split the lot again, can they?
They always could if they did a redevelopment, they're no longer one, however they split that property, whether it's as shown now with the original plats. If they were redeveloping the entire site so that each site was independent and didn't depend, did not depend on one, on one site versus the other, absolutely, they could do that.
What about a similar condition if you have a granted easement for the center of the property for the access that's required? So it's the same owner, you're granting it to yourself knowing that in the future that's there, so it's, you alleviate the buyer beware situation, but it can also be reversed?
Our experience has not been favorable over the years as to people wanting to record those easements because they want to have the opportunity to redevelop the entire site themselves or to, when somebody's interested in looking at the site, to have that flexibility. So we, we've not experienced positive things with regard to shared easements. Again, overwhelming majority of the time in my experience is that they never get recorded or they're a handshake or verbal agreement. Terribly difficult to deal with after the fact.
Can I say something? Yeah, so I think, again, our concern is we're, we're talking about hypotheticals that could happen in the future, not the way the site has actually functioned over the past probably decades. We don't feel like right now there's even an issue with this because it is the same ownership. And if, if the sites were combined, it sounds like there's really no way to ever undo that unless you radically alter the site, meaning you'd probably have to tear one of the buildings down in order to make a fully compliant parking lot on the site. So our concern is about doing something now that really restricts what the owner can do with the site in the future. I don't know if, you know, if providing a cross access easement now is a solution that would make everyone feel a little more comfortable. I don't know if that's something you'd be willing to consider.
I just feel like that I'm granting him this by, with the lease that he's going to have. And if he was to ever break that lease in one way or the other, then it would be a different situation, whether I rented them separately. And so I don't see how right today this makes a difference. And, and I bought this and I like the fact that it was two parcels and that I have some options in the future. And I'm not utilizing the space, I'm having a tenant utilize the space. So the person that's going to get injured from this is my tenant because I may decide not to go through with this tenant and pick, pick two separate tenants or pick a different tenant. So I, and I like, I like this gentleman, Bernard, and I like what he's doing. And so I, I'm asking, you know, this is a hardship on me to, to lease it to him and I, I just want to have the option in the future. I don't, I have seen no reason to combine these at this time when I can just give him the option through a lease to, to use the whole property. And, and it would be, it would be gone away if he was to only use one building because it wouldn't, that would break the lease.
Yeah, it would limit your ability to maybe do something in the future potentially.
I'll add that the solution to that would be for the, if, if the planning commission decides to approve this, the special land use and then followed by the site plan, that you have a contingency that they seek the necessary variances from the zoning board appeals.
And what would those be?
That would be related to, what comes to mind is the drive, minimum drive aisle width to access the parking spaces on now each of the sites.
Any other comments in the side, questions?
As a reminder, we don't have a full commission tonight. It says a special land use, so it does require a public hearing, which will open in just a second. But wanted to let, you know, you will have the option to make a determination of whether you want to continue to move forward tonight or postpone it when we do have a full commission. If there isn't anything else, I'll have you take a seat, go ahead and open the public comment and you'll have an opportunity to speak again after we hear from the public.
Okay. Thank you.
So because this is a special land use, we're going to go ahead and open the public comment on this. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this agenda item and this special land use? Gentlemen, with the hat.
My name is Bestim Seaman and my, my son has the, the, in the back of the property, void jack collision. And we have several mechanical in this room. At the same time, we have European auto house on the side. So therefore, I wouldn't want it, I wouldn't want it to be there. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this item? There's another gentleman in the back. Yep.
Jacobumla, 4534 Fernley, down the street from here, another German auto repair place. We're 60% German. We got, there, there's, within maybe 200 feet, there's five other shops. Just the concern, but it looks like we're talking about parking today. Well, you're going to have tow trucks that like, we, we have maybe four or five tow trucks in our lot every day, dropping off cars. How they getting into this lot? That, that's my, that's my concern. Well, taking business from us is that's my concern, but that's, that would be my other concern after listening to what was said today. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, going to go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to the side. Anything else from any of the commissioners, questions? Commissioner Douglas.
So the, the parking issue is part of the site plan, not part of the special land use. Okay, I'm looking approval of the special land use.
Give them the option to postpone, Woody.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Yep. So now the public comment's concluded. Now is when you'll, you'll have the option to determine if you want to continue to move forward tonight and have us take action. Since we don't, again, since we don't have the full commission, you don't have the full complement of votes, it could affect the outcome, so you do have the option of postponing tonight's action.
Okay, can I, I just want to clarify procedurally, is the first vote whether or not to approve the special land use and then the second vote would be related to the planning?
Correct.
Issues on the site?
Two, two separate actions, yeah.
Okay. And if, if the, let's say either one of them is not denied, can we reapply at that point?
That's a great question. If a special land use gets approved, but a site plan is denied.
I believe that there's provision in the zoning ordinance that states that there's a one-year essentially waiting provision to come back and ask for a, if, if a special land use is denied, to come back. I think, I believe it's one year.
But what if the special land use is approved and the site plan is denied?
Yeah.
Oops.
I, I don't want to give you an answer to that because I'm not entirely confident on that one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think generally we'd want to go forward, but we also don't want to get trapped in that scenario.
Sure.
As you can understand, so.
Any guidance you want to offer?
I don't know the answer to that question any more than Joseph does.
Okay.
I guess, well, based on that, you are comfortable moving forward or would you like us postpone?
I'm confused. The special land use you, you're going to vote on and then the second one, I, Joe, I thought I talked to you about if, if it wasn't perfect, that we could resubmit it, you know, the way you wanted it or how they wanted it. I thought we talked about that.
I don't recall that, but if you would like to move forward, the board, you'll need three, at least three affirmative votes for the special land use and the site plan to be approved.
Can we move forward with the, the special use and then, and then put the other one?
If the board is interested, I think that's a little awkward, but.
With a restriction or some kind? I don't, because I'm not understanding it 100%. Do you understand it?
I, I understand. So the first vote is to whether or not to just approve the use here in the zoning area. The second vote would be basically in regards to the issue of the parking, the landscaping.
Site issues.
The site issues, sort of the technical site issues. The, I think the concern on our, would be if they approve the conditional use, great, but then don't approve the planning conditions, can we resubmit with corrected plans? Is that a possibility? Or is there an opportunity to discuss that before you vote?
One second. Mr. Esri.
From my perspective, and obviously I don't speak for the five present board members, but I think it's best if you make a decision if you want to move forward with both actions or if you want to delay both actions. I don't think it's in the best interest of anybody in the room to quite frankly move on one action and table the other. So please make a decision if you're going to move forward or if you're going to kick it down the road a month.
Okay, no, that, and that's perfectly fair. I guess we just want to understand if we, if we do go forward, but it's denied, is there an opportunity to resubmit on both areas? It sounds like for the conditional land use, you have to wait a year, which then kills this project.
Yes. Correct. I think that would go for any denial, correct? You cannot resubmit a substantially similar project for another year, whether it's a site plan.
With regard to the site plan, I don't know the ordinance, if there's a specific ordinance provision, I can't picture that in my, in my head, but I can with regard to the special land use. I think Mr. Esri's point is extraordinarily well said.
Yep. So.
I'm completely confused. I understand what you're saying, I just don't, you're not giving me an answer on the second one.
Correct.
Because if we can't resubmit it, then that would like, that's like, that's, it should be, most cities are pro-business. We want to, you know, move forward and that's like a negative. It doesn't seem right.
That's why you're being offered the opportunity to have it postponed until fall, until next month or if you would like the board to make a decision today.
But, you know, postponing it another month is another month that we don't, that where goes in the future would hurt the tenant the most.
Your other option is we can move forward tonight.
Woody, so the only difference is instead of the five of us, there would be seven of us. I mean, potentially.
What I also have the answer.
We have two commissioners missing, that's, that's the, and who knows how they will vote.
Well, let me ask this, what is, what is the second vote then? To?
The first vote is to, for the, the way you want to use the land. The second is the actual physical conditions of the site itself.
Based on this plan or based on?
Based on what you've submitted to us.
Who was the person that, that you sent these plans into? Was it Joe? Just want to make sure.
No, it was, I can't remember which gentleman.
Because I spoke.
Another planner, one of the other planners.
Because I spoke to the planner. I spoke to the planner. I thought it was Joe, so he didn't remember, so it must have been somebody else. And they said, yes, you can, we'll work with you on resubmitting the plans because there's no way I could get it perfect based on what you guys might want. They said that you guys would make recommendations and we'd come back with the plan.
Okay, that's, I mean, right now, all you have to decide is whether you want five people to decide or seven people to decide. Sorry, Woody, if I'm stepping on here.
That's not true because I could be postponed by a year. Correct.
So if you're unsure, then it might be best to just postpone it a month and have a follow-up discussion with the planning department.
So it would just mean introducing your facts to two other commissioners who will watch it on TV probably before the meeting.
Okay, the tenant would like to vote, so we're going to go to the vote.
I'm approving the special land use.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is that Brian?
A second.
So motion from Commissioner Douglas, second from Mr. Cooper, approving the special land use, correct?
Yes.
All right. We'll do another roll call vote. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Esri?
Yes.
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 I mean, yes, so the special land use has been approved. So now we will move on to the site plan review. Are there additional questions, comments, concerns on the site plan that haven't been discussed already?
Let me ask Joseph a question. What do we need to do? What contingencies do we need to add to this site plan in front of us to meet the requirements that you talked about, the drive and that kind of stuff?
Sure, I'll bring those up on the screen. They're referenced in our memo. So we recommend the following contingencies and you'll, you'll see combining the properties, maintaining the operational standards set forth in the ordinance specific to auto repair and extending the landscaping further. And then the standard contingencies that we have. Really, the only two unique ones are combining the properties and extending the landscape all the way to the front property line on 14 Mile Road. Again, if you were wanting to, you could modify the first contingency and simply state that the petitioner must seek the necessary variances in lieu of combining the properties into a single.
Yeah, because I, I'm not a fan of making him combine the properties because I think that, that ties the landlord's hands if he gets a tenant. So it, you know, he's got to rent the whole thing and a half of it. So I don't like the first contingency, but if we can change it to what Joseph just said, then I can move the rest of it.
Well, I've got a question on that. So the contingency number one about combining the parcels, in lieu of that, if the contingency were to record a shared access agreement, would that satisfy the, our concern in terms of making sure we maintain that, that access?
If anyone would like a refill of hot chocolate, come on up.
Yeah.
Miraculously threw my voice. Sorry about that.
Where's the line?
So my question is, if, if the contingency were to record a shared access agreement, it's the same owner recording the agreement on both properties that they own. If at some point in the future, they did want to sell one of the parcels, since they own both parcels, they could rescind that shared access agreement from themselves essentially, correct?
That's true, but it doesn't negate the fact that there's a fat, hardened, fast property line down the drive aisle.
Sure, but that's for that owner to sort of contend with at that point because they're now creating a non-conforming situation, which they'll have to contend with as the owner of the remaining parcel.
Then that, that's the right word, the non-conformity. And so the zoning board appeals would have to acknowledge that through variance.
Okay, so do you think the better language is for them? Okay, so do you think the better language is for them to seek proper variances, or to have a contingency that requires a shared access?
I would say to seek the variances.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. I mean, my, if we're getting the combining the properties out of there, replacing it with the language Joe was talking about, then I can move the site plan that way.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, no, I said I could move it.
Oh, sir. Second?
So just to confirm, it's a motion to remove condition one from the contingencies, and then direct the petitioner to seek the appropriate variances from the zoning board?
In lieu of combining.
In lieu of combining the properties?
Yes, yes.
I second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Esri.
And that variance, again, just to clarify, would be to address the minimum aisle, the drive aisle width.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll add that that will be on a future zoning board appeals agenda, so if the petitioner's interested in, time is of the essence, essentially the same timeframe to go to the ZBA, arguably longer than to just administratively combine them.
Cooper?
Also confirming that the screening of the fence and the modification of the islands and the landscape on the front easement are included in that as well?
Looking at those.
Okay.
That's actually listed as one of the contingencies already.
Yep.
Any other discussions?
So, just what I just heard is, if they do decide to combine the parcels, then they don't have to go to the ZBA?
Correct. If they have to go to the ZBA, the next available agenda is February, zoning board appeals agenda. If they seek, if they could submit a land combination application tomorrow to the city assessor, and it would, I would sign off on it immediately.
And when they seek the ZBA, they'd be seeking on two properties, so it'd be two applications and not one?
Yes.
Okay.
Good clarification. Any other discussion on the motion? I think it's time to vote. We'll do another roll call vote. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Esri?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Yes.
And AMES as well, so the site plan with the amended contingencies has been approved.
It's Commissioner Douglas, I believe. Oh, for the land use?
The hot chocolate threw us off.
Chocolate.
Okay, that's it for this agenda item, correct? Yes, all right, well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we are moving on to agenda item 4C, special land use and site plan, SP 24-12-18. Mr. Murphy?
This is a surface parking lot directly adjacent to us, it's in the central business district, zoning district. The petitioner is proposing to, I'll refer to the drawing, proposing to seek, seeking site plan and special land use approval in order to build a multi-story apartment building with 59 units. There are 63 off-street parking spaces provided within the building. In the central business zoning district, multifamily developments are required to provide one and a half parking spaces per unit. Again, those parking spaces must be provided onsite, so in this case, within the building, since the building essentially encompasses the whole site. The petitioner would be required to provide 89 parking spaces, again, at a one and a half ratio, their ratio is, is slightly over one parking space per unit. So the, the ground floor, sort of the lower level ground floor and second floor are parking, and the upper levels are three floors of the residential, which comprise 59 units. And then there's a small patio or outdoor area on the top floor. The building measures 64.8 feet to the roof line, it measures 75.8 feet to the top of the stairs of the elevator tower. In the central business zoning district, there's zoning ordinance provisions that suggest to you height limitations based on the location of the property and proximity to the adjacent single-family neighborhood. So, the more central you are within the, the central business zoning district, or downtown, the taller a building can be. As it gets closer to the outlined residential, buildings are suggested to be lower. But there is a caveat that allows the planning commission to, at their own discretion, determine that the height, any height is, can be considered. And again, this one is directly adjacent to property that's owned, single-family residential, so there's a suggested height limitation, but the planning commission can approve the height as is. The building does, would not have any south, north, or west setback, but have a very slight east setback. And I'll hover over the area, the aerial photograph. The east setback is directly adjacent to a property that has a small frontage on Third Street, and extends northward to a parking lot and an office building. And that is separated from the adjacent single-family house by the, the measurement of that width, which is about 33 feet. So the building is set slightly off that east property line. There is an additional provision in the zoning ordinance specific for the downtown that recommends that upper floors, anything above 40 feet, that the, the front plane of the building, after 40 feet, step back in 15 feet, and then go further higher. In this case, the petitioner has a completely front-flat plane from the ground all the way to the, to the top parapet wall, which extends close to 70 feet. We'll take a look at their rendering to show the location of the refuse, and the generator, and electrical transformer that they're proposing. I think that's best shown on this rendering, which illustrates the building in comparison to the adjacent courthouse. There is a drive aisle that separates the proposed building from the courthouse, that is still platted public right-of-way, so it's Hamilton Court, it is a public right-of-way. And so the petitioner would be using that public right-of-way in order to access the trash area and the generator area, which are on the north side of the building, and I'll hover over the area that they're at. The planning commission should determine if the ground floor facade is sufficient. This is a rather low pedestrian area of the downtown, but it is still significant that the planning commission should review the material that they're proposing, which is a screened, a screen from the parking lot, or excuse me, the parking spaces that are within the building. So you'll see they've illustrated a screen material to set the, the vision off, offset the vision of the parking spaces within the building. The one thing I will note that wasn't included in, in our report, but that is applicable, is that there is an overhead door to get to the parking spaces along Third Street, and then they're also proposing one along the east facade, excuse me, the west facade of the building. They're right at the property line, and I think it would be appropriate if the planning commission is seeking to approve the project, to add a contingency that they include an audio and a visual alarm of some sort, so that when vehicles are exiting those doors, since they're directly adjacent to the sidewalk, that it gives a pedestrian a fair warning. We'll look at the west facade of the building, this, I'll hover over it, the west facade of the building. This building has no setback from that west property line, that property line abuts the city's property. So, the drive aisle that you see to the city's parking lot is, is not public right-of-way, it's city, the city's private piece of property. The building code limits the amount of openings that you, wall openings that you can have when you're right at a, when a building is set right at a property line. So an example of wall overing is certainly an overhead garage door for vehicle entry, as would an entry door, or operable windows for any of the units, whether that's on the ground floor, or the fifth floor, or the 10th floor, and beyond. As shown, staff's calculated that, it appears as though there's about 31 percent openings on that west facade. So again, the allowable per the building code would be zero. So, the, there are some potential options or modifications for, that are available to the petitioner. Certainly one of them is for them to go back to the drawing board and have no openings whatsoever, a blank facade. They could step the building back, or they could approach the city commission and ask that, that adjacent drive aisle become dedicated public right-of-way. And I want to show that on their survey, so that everyone understands what we're referring I'll use the, the existing survey, which illustrates, as you can clearly see, the parking spaces. As we had talked about, on the north side is platted public right-of-way, you'll see listed as Knolls 40-foot right-of-way. So that's where they're going to access their transformer and their refuse. They certainly have frontage on, on Third Street, where they'll have a garage door to enter their building, and that garage door on the west facade, again, is at the property line. So a potential solution for them would be to approach the city commission and ask that this segment of the city's drive aisle become dedicated public right-of-way. And once it becomes dedicated public right-of-way, then they certainly have the opportunity to have a far greater percentage of openings, windows, balconies, garage overhead doors, entry doors to the building, they have a much greater opportunity to have openings on that west facade. So that is possible solution for them, that we've, we've had a conversation, extensive conversation with them about that option. Following the public hearing, the planning commission can approve the, the request, this site plan and associated special land use, approve with contingencies, or certainly deny the request, and there are, there's a basis of determination for the special land use that's identified in the zoning ordinance and in the report. And once the special land use request is voted on, then the planning commission can make a motion with regard to the site plan and the site plan issues. So there are some recommended contingencies associated with the site plan. I would, I would add that if you're gravitating towards approval, that you also add, including an audio and a visual element to warn pedestrians.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. If the petitioner is here, I will, oh, pardon me, hang on one second. Commissioner Douglas?
Oh, wait, so theoretically, theoretically, given that, that, that north-south driveway is not a dedicated right-of-way, if the city wanted to build a building right over it, it could. That being the problem with having openings on the west facade of the proposed development, right?
That is absolutely correct.
And, but once the city dedicated that as a public right-of-way, we could not build something there.
That is correct.
Ever again.
Correct.
Okay, that's my one question. But here is a more relevant question, and, and I, I think this needs to be stated. This project came to, or the concept for this project came to the city commission because it has a substantial number of rent, low-rent units, public units, it's workforce housing. And I, I think that may affect our decision-making here at this table, and I want to make sure that if we approve the site, the special land use and the site plan, that all of those conditions for low rent, or rent-controlled housing will be met. How are we tying all of that together?
We'll have the petitioner speak to that. They applied for low-income housing tax credits through the state. They've expressed that if they are unable to obtain, they can tell you the status of that application. I know it's been, the response from the state has been delayed to, to them, as well as all the other developers that have requested Lytech funding, is referred to as Lytech funding. But if they don't receive that funding, they've indicated that this project doesn't happen. And once the state issues them these tax credits, there's, and they can address the, the length of years that the project is then obligated by their, by their funding source to be, to remain that affordable housing, or, and they can also address the income brackets that they're seeking to, to attract. I will, I will state that the zoning ordinance is silent on whether housing is owner-occupied, or renter-occupied, or the income level of individuals, so I think we should be as well. And I will remind the board that there is a local ordinance that prohibits discrimination based against sources of income.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy, before we ask the petitioner to come up? All right, now, if the petitioner's here, if you wouldn't mind coming up, introduce yourself, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Stephen Doron, I'm with Lockwood Development Companies. I've been in front of city commission a couple times on this project, as Commissioner Douglas mentioned. We've been working on this for a little over a year at this point, both pursuing some of the economic side of things first, showing some images and renderings that are consistent with what we're, we're showing the planning commission today, but more talking about the economics of the deal, and how we put the financing together for this. So I think the conversation leading into this is, is appropriate. What we are proposing is a mixed-income development, so this is 50 percent market rate, 50 percent affordable. And when I say affordable, we are at the 60 percent of the area median income and below. So, in terms of rents and dollars and things like that, we're typically talking about folks making up to that 40, 50, $60,000 range, in terms of who would qualify under the low-income housing tax credit project through, through the state. And the rents are typically, for those units, are looking at around $800 a month for the one-bedrooms, and about $950 for the two-bedrooms. So generally speaking, that's, that's kind of where we're, where our rents are targeted. Now, if we are successful in securing those, which I'm knocking on all the wood I can find around me, there is a 30-year commitment that we make to the state. We are also talking with Oakland County about some financing things, they would have a 20-year commitment. So we're exceeding the, the 20-year commitment that both the city resources and the county resources would come to the table with. So, those are, require land use restrictive agreements, so those are recorded documents that bind us for that 30-year period. There is recapture of the tax credits if we don't comply with those. So there's annual recording, reporting requirements that we have to give to Michigan State Housing Development Authority every year. So, there's, there's a lot of safeguards in place, that when we say this will be affordable, it, it will remain affordable for 30 years. Our business model typically is, we go back and re-renovate the projects every 15 years, so that's when you're eligible to go back through and do, you know, full renovations. So, these are developments that we intend to build and hold for the long term. So we develop them ourselves, we construct them ourselves, and we manage them ourselves. So with that, we're here for the long haul. This is not a merchant builder flip-type situation. We are local, we're, we're based in Southfield, we have 26 communities throughout Michigan, a little over 3,100 units, and we've been in the housing business since 1944. So the development itself, and I'll, I'll let our architect do most of the presentation that we have here, but I just wanted to talk about a couple of the big things that, that have come up so far in the discussion, so I think Joseph made a good point about the audiovisual things for folks entering and exiting the garage. I think that's something that has not been on our radar screen in terms of conditions, but if that's something that the commission wants to, to put on any sort of approvals, we would be happy to comply with that, I think it makes a lot of sense. We do have, and Jason will get into the presentation as far as...
(laughing).
As far as the, the parking situation here, so that's, that's been a tricky one for us to solve. This is a narrow site, and, and with that comes a lot of site constraints, but we do have one and a half stories of parking, so half-floor is below grade, half-floor is above, and then there's the floor, residential floors. So we do have 61 parking spaces, 59 units. So we are above that one-to-one, we do have a heavy percentage of one-bedroom units in it, so we, we think that would be an appropriate parking count for this development. In terms of the height considerations, yes, we are in the central business district, yes, there is technically a single-family district adjacent to us, but as one of the exhibits showed, there is, Knolls has been vacated a long time ago, so there still is that 33-foot buffer to, to the east side of us. In terms of the potential right-of-way identification that we may ask the commission for, I think having openings on that side of the building makes a lot of sense from a operational standpoint, but as well as a visual standpoint. If we're looking from City Hall towards the site, I don't think a blank, empty wall really benefits anybody, so having kind of the visual openings, the eyes on the street, gives it that more sort of dynamic street presence, which really helps lend to the integration with the neighborhood that we're trying to achieve here. In terms of the height considerations, yes, we're at 64 feet, in the central business district, I do think we have... In the central business district, I do think we have the ability to, to go that high. I think in the past, a development has been approved on this site at 96 feet with zero parking at all. So there is some precedent for, for that height at this particular location. But we don't, we don't feel that that's something that we need to do. This, at 64 feet, does achieve our objectives. It is an economically tight project. We're still working on securing the, the entire packet to make that work. When we are restricting our rents for a 30-year period, that really limits what we can do in terms of the economics of, of the project and trying to maximize what we can actually fit on, on that site there. Underground parking is also incredibly expensive. Using high-quality durable materials like the, the brick and the fiber cement boards, these are meant to withstand long, you know, decades of use. This is a, you know, 60-year-plus building that we intend to continue to, to reinvest in. And with that, I think I've covered most everything, and I'll let Jason walk you through kind of the, the design of the project, and I'll certainly be here to take any follow-ups you have.
Good evening, Jason Krieger with Krieger Cloud Architects, 400 East Lincoln, Suite A. So a lot's been covered, but what I figured we could do is maybe go through some of the slides, and I'll touch on things that have not been mentioned yet, and then we're available for questions. Just the one thing that I, I wanted to mention is that this site is definitely unique, as I'm sure everybody here knows, and as been mentioned, that there is, there's no public right of way on the west or the east. So automatically, you're being penalized with either no windows or stepping the building in. There's also, it's also very narrow. It's only 70 feet deep. So once you start to try and apply a building that needs a certain amount of density or product on there to make it work financially, you're just getting pinched. On top of that, along the north, which we have a slide that will show you, there are power lines, and you need to stay at least 16 feet away from those power lines. So that's penalizing the site as well. So what Stephen's trying to do when he's looking for money, as he's talking about, is, and we, we have been speaking to DTE, is to bury those power lines to then build the building on the property line. Otherwise, you wouldn't be able to do it. So there are all these different constraints that are sort of, I guess, bringing us here through this process. And in just researching the site and seeing different proposed developments on this site over the years, I've seen at least three or four, and, you know, none of them went through. I think this is the farthest I've ever seen anything come. And I think, I think it's an exciting project, you know, with the mixed income. I think it's what the city's been talking about and looking for, and this is a legitimate project that would actually do that. So these are some images of the site. I think everybody's familiar with it. Next slide. We'll just flip through some of these, and like I said, I'll see if there's something that I, I want to call out. This right here is important. So that's a architectural site plan. The dark gray box is the building footprint. You can see Third Street, and then Knowles kind of bends into it. The courthouse is right to the north, as you can see. Do you guys have that on your screen there as well? Okay. So the yellow is a proposed, that easement that they were talking about. By adding that easement there, and I don't know the technical way that would happen, but we would work through that, that allows us to add the glass and openings along that facade. And, you know, we, we looked at trying to bring the building back, and to start, every time that would happen, it started to reduce density. And their margins are so tight, and again, I think that's better for Stephen to talk about, that, you know, we need to be creative, and that was one of the options, and the city's been great working with and at least talking to us about it, about some kind of an overlay easement so that, because that elevation faces the downtown, obviously, so we want it to look really nice. And that's where we put the main lobby, which is almost two stories, it's a lot of glass, something really, really nice, that's what we wanted to do there. The trash worked out perfect in the, it'd be on the northeast corner, so it's totally hidden. The parking for this project is hidden in the building. As mentioned, it's a, oh, go back up, please, Joseph. See that yellow area along there that's highlighted? That's where the power lines are. So you wouldn't be able to put a building there, you'd have to come in 16 feet, you have to jog the building in that amount. But because of the grading, it's about five feet from one end to the other, that allowed us to kind of like load the parking in a ramp that's kind of like this. So part of it's underground, and part of it's, you know, the rest of it is not. So we're able to be very efficient with that, but we got to watch out because the water table there is, I think, six feet, which, so Royal Oak is between like eight and five feet, depending on where you are. So we had to kind of ride that line as well. Next slide, please. So this is the, it's like the lower-level plan. So if you come in off of Knowles, and then you would go down, and that's where you'd park, you can see the elevators and the stairs take you up. We have another stairway there for egress. And we're showing on the right, that's actually grade level facing the courthouse, and that's where we have our transformer and refuse. If you go to the next slide. So this is above it. You come in, if, if the easement's granted, off of where City Hall is, and then you go up. And one of the comments was to put the ADA spaces closer to the lobby, which makes total sense. But in order to make the ramps work, the ramps start pretty, they start really at the lobby, like right around there. So it's flat where the ADA spaces are, and then folks would just come right across the drive aisle. Now, because this is a apartment building, and, you know, there's a garage, there's a rolling garage door in each opening, it's controlled, so we feel it's safe, you know, that, that people could traverse that. It's not a, you know, parking lot like here where people could just be, you know, driving around, so we thought that that was safe. We do have a slide later on we'll show you about the vision triangles. So this is a typical floor going up. It's a double-loaded corridor. It's a mix of one beds and two beds. We do have a small clubhouse on an upper level. Something to mention is that the balconies, well, part because we don't have a choice because of the property line, and part because we're just considering any of the neighbors around the area, but they're all recessed. So they're not hanging out, they're all recessed, so it helps to preserve some privacy for any of the neighbors who are over to the east, or even across the street. So this is the top floor. This, right now, I think it's pretty much in, or thereabouts, right? Okay. This is a clubhouse with a deck that faces the downtown, so it doesn't face the neighborhood. It's just a little amenity. It's a check-in-the-box, it's a nice thing to have. One thing I want to mention is that this building is being built as market rate even though there's an affordable component. So it's all high-end materials, the brick, the, the fiber cement siding. Think of like Icon and the Hyatt Place, that's all fiber cement, and 10 years later, it still looks great. That's what this is going to be, is that and masonry. And then metal windows and metal trim. And the interior of the units will be designed market rate as well. So it's not like we're downplaying that. So it's going to be a beautiful building. Then we have a couple of building sections in here. They're just showing how the parking works, where it's slanted. You can see how the grade is higher on the left than the right, and then the four floors are up above it. Next slide, please. You could keep going, I think we talked about all this. We have some elevations. We're showing an example of the screening on the parking. It's an open parking garage, so we don't have any, you know, like heaters in there, so we need to make sure that it airflows. Kind of think about some of the other garages here around town that, that's a similar treatment to the parking garage. We did purposefully step the, well, not step, but did a different material up at the top, just so visually it kind of transitions the building as it goes taller. Next slide, please. On the east, faces a single family, we reduced the windows, so that's the bare minimum that we could have, and they're not operable. So nobody can open the window or anything like that, so it should be quiet. One thing to mention really quick, we had a neighborhood meeting last night, and we had a few people come out, which was great, and there was a couple who live right across the street, and there's a duplex. And they actually, they're excited about this. Everybody there, thankfully, they, they really enjoyed this, they, they liked it, they're in favor of the project, but they really like this, and I never thought of this, but, and so I'm like, really, that's great, you know, they, well, you know, we can't wait for it to be quiet, because these residential buildings are pretty quiet if you go around buildings plays, Main, North, Lost, you know, they're not, there's not a lot of traffic at all, you know, it's controlled, there's management there. They said what drives them crazy is all the festivals that found their way down onto that lot, this lot, like, there's like the snow slide and the wrestling mat and all that, drove them nuts for years. So they're looking forward to this. I thought that was kind of funny. We go to the next slide. And then I think we just have some renderings in here that, I guess if you keep going, Joseph, because we saw this, saw this. Keep going, keep going, keep going. That's why I go, keep going, keep going. That's why I go to the vision triangles really quick. There we go. Okay, because I know that, you know, the last couple of projects we were here for, this was a hot topic, so we definitely addressed it. Right now, our proposal is to do like a, just a visual, like lights, because I think when we were working on, right up the street on Main Street, there was concern about an audio thing, because it might bother the neighbors. So it's up to the planning commission if you guys want audio and visual, but right now, we just pictured some flashing lights, but we were looking at the vision triangles, what we got, if you go to the next one. We're showing examples of what you see today on the left and what you would see once the building's built. So we will have openings, but, you know, it's a little bit hindered on the left, obviously, but we did try and keep it open, and we would have, there's a garage door that would be there that would roll up, so that takes a little bit. That with the audio, we, we think that people would be, would be safe. Plus, on this side, we're showing a sidewalk, and I actually don't think there would be a sidewalk there, because there's really no room, and you're walking right out into a driveway, you know, I think it might just be grass, actually. But on Third, in Knowles, you'd have a sidewalk, so we have a similar illustration here. So we're, we're looking at it, we're considering it, we're going to make sure that it's safe, So that's, that's the presentation. I just want to touch on some of the basis of determinations, just really quick, and then we'll be available for, for questions. So we're, it says it'll be harmonious in accordance with the objectives of the master plan. You know, we understand that this is not a mixed-use building. Our opinion is that this is outside of the downtown enough where a multifamily building would be ideal. We don't really see retail doing very well here. It's right on the cusp, it's kind of in that crook of Third and Knowles, so we feel that we're meeting the intent of the master plan anyway. The parking's shielded, and, you know, at the end of the day, this is going to bring a number of people that can go in and benefit the downtown. So we feel that we're, we're meeting at least the intent of the master plan. Will be designed, constructed, operated, maintained, so as to be harmonious with the general vicinity, will not change the essential character of the area. As I mentioned, it's, it's going to be a high-quality building. It matches the style and materials of the downtown buildings. We're, we're trying to lean more towards like the municipal complex here and what's in downtown, and making sure it's a high-quality building. And again, it's, it's a market-rate building. Will not be hazardous or disturbing, or disturbing to existing or future uses. I already mentioned about the neighbors across the street. You know, generally speaking, residential buildings are good neighbors. They're actually very quiet, and they're managed. There's management usually 24 hours there, so that's a good thing. And it will not create any burden on local utility, local utilities. And I think in one of these comments, it says that if there is something that the owner would pick it up, so that would be a yes, they would handle anything that would, would be required in order to maintain the building and operate it. Will be an improvement in relation to the property in the immediate vicinity, or properties in the immediate vicinity and the city as a whole. So we see this as activating a vacant piece of property. Like I mentioned, it's been vacant since the 60s at least. I went on, I went back in time on some of the aerials, and I think it was 64 it was a parking lot, it's been a parking lot ever since. So we're taking something that's offline and activating it. And again, more, more benefit to the downtown. Will be served adequately by central public services and facilities, where the applicant will provide the services, that's a yes. Will not create excessive additional public costs. This is the exact opposite. I have no idea what they pay in taxes there right now, but once you put a $20 million investment on that site, you know, there's, it's a boon for, for the DDA or whoever collects the taxes, so we see that as being, being a plus. And then we'll be consistent with the intent and purposes of chapter, of this chapter, and comply with all applicable provisions and standards which are established for said use by this chapter. So it's referring to the zoning ordinance, I believe. That one was, I had scratched my head on that, but we are asking for some deviations, otherwise we're complying with the zoning ordinance, so. That's what I have.
Are you attempting to match the brick with the City Hall and the, and courthouse brick?
No.
Give in any thought to that.
Is that a leading question, sir?
Well, no, it's.
I'm joking.
No, I mean, it's going to be, we've got all these buildings that are all basically very similar colors. And it looks like you're putting a light-colored accent brick on there. Was that deliberately, or is that just the color you picked?
Well, it's really just the color that was picked at the time, I suppose. We haven't picked the actual brick yet.
Do you think it would blend better if the brick was lighter?
It may, actually.
Okay, I'll leave it at that.
That's a good point.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Commissioner Douglas.
And this may, where'd he go? Yeah. Just in terms of if we were to, if the city were to make that drive aisle a dedicated public right of way, how does that affect your timetable? I mean, we've got city commission meetings in six, this Monday, and then not until January something.
So we have been talking on and off of the city engineering department on that for several months now, so just waiting for that to be ready to go through the internal administrative review and then brought forward.
Okay.
So we've looked at a lot of different things, from easements to right-of-way dedications to property swaps here and there, and it seems like the cleanest, simplest way to solve that is right-of-way dedication. That way, it maintains city control and ownership of, over it. So as quick as that could come up for consideration, that would, that would be our desire as well.
Okay, so those wheels are in motion?
Yes.
Okay, good, thanks. That's my question.
I have a question about the, the distribution of the market versus affordable units within the building itself. Are they, is it broken up amongst the building, or can you talk a little bit about how those are being distributed?
Yeah, so, so the units themselves will be indistinguishable from each other. So when we have our annual reports that we have to provide to Michigan in this case, we have to show them, hey, we, we promised that we would set aside, you know, I think it's 21 bedrooms and 10 two-bedrooms for, for affordable. We have to be able to show them every year that we are maintaining that. So if somebody moves out of one, if, if they were in an affordable unit, and we have somebody else coming back in for market rate, we can't put them back in. We have to make sure that we maintain that. So it's not like, you know, unit 4B is affordable for forever and ever, and unit 1A is always market rate. It just, as long as we maintain that balance throughout the year, that's the objective. So no difference at all between the units.
So can you speak a little bit, maybe using some of your other properties? Do you typically see a good distribution amongst the different floors of market rate and affordable units?
Yeah, yeah. So people come in, usually the affordable is what comes in first, because when folks want an apartment in Royal Oak, and we're saying we have one bedrooms for $800, there's a very long list of those folks coming in the door. So we'll open leasing to everybody. My hunch is that those are going to go quick, and, and those are going to be the first ones that people move in and select, hey, I want, I want this unit, I like this view, I'll take that one. With it being 59 units, I think the demand is going to be very strong, both market rate and affordable. So it's almost a first-come, first-served type situation once we go out to leasing, but we just know that we, we can't exceed, you know, the 50%.
Sure, okay. And just for clarification, the reason I ask the question is I think it's important that, because I've seen other mixed-income projects where that consideration was not at the, in there in the beginning, and what you end up with is a conglomeration of the affordable units in maybe the less desirable areas of the building, and all the market-rate units get the more desirable areas of the building. So the question was really to understand if that, that same problem was going to occur, so thank you. Any other questions? With that, I'll have you take a seat, and because this is a special land use, there is a public hearing involved, and I'll go ahead and open that. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this project? Right here, ma'am, in the center aisle?
Good evening. My name is Kay Akwolina, and I reside at 501 East Third Street. I've lived there for almost 40 years. I am here to voice my opposition to the proposed development of a six-story multiple-family building identified as special land use and site plan, SP 241218, at the northwest corner of East Third Street and Knowles. My reasons for opposing the development are as follows. The proposed development will use almost every foot of the current parking lot located at this site. The extreme size of the structure will look totally out of place in our lovely city civic center. By the way, my husband and I love the civic center and especially Centennial Park, and we would like to thank anyone on the planning commission that played a role in that development. This proposed structure would degrade the beauty and the allure of this civic center area. The parking and traffic would negatively impact our residential neighborhood. The city's road classification system identifies East Third Street and Knowles Street as local streets. streets. Local streets are designated for low-traffic volumes. This development would increase the traffic volume significantly in the immediate area. It would obstruct the view of many residents and municipal buildings in and around the development. The proposed construction would place an additional burden on our infrastructure. In closing, I would encourage you to read the comments on the Facebook group page, Royal Oak Residents for Royal Oak, in regards to opinions from residents concerning the site plan. As a neighbor of ours stated, people driving to our city and having the civic center as their destination will say, "It's beautiful, but what is that behemoth over there?" Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make comments? We're right over here.
Hi, I'm Alex Morford, 503 West Sunnybrook. I'm very in favor of this proposal. We should welcome everyone to Royal Oak. Right now, we have members of our community who work but can't afford housing. I was recently at the welcome, at the warming center over at Star Church. They have folks, you know, spending the night there right now that work but don't have anywhere to go home to. So, you know, having this is very important. It's a very important step in the right direction. My sister lives in New York City. She lives in, uh, she's lived in a few different mixed-income developments. They're all very nice buildings. You know, they integrate well with the neighborhoods. And I've really enjoyed visiting her in those buildings. I know there's a little bit of discussion about the height and the size and the setbacks. I think it's important to note that municipalities across the country generally give a little bit of leeway to affordable developments to make sure they can be built. This is in the Central Business District, imwackable to many establishments. I want to leave you with a question. If we can't build affordable housing here, then where can we build it? Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Gentlemen, right here in the block.
Good evening. My name is Michael Akwallina, and I reside at 501 East Third Street in Royal Oak. I would like to refer to the Royal Oak Community Development Memorandum from the Planning Division to the Planning Commission dated November 25th, 2024 regarding this matter. Excuse me. On a number of issues addressed in the memorandum, the Planning Division is recommending or suggesting to the Planning Commission that they take a position contrary to establish zoning regulations. The following are some examples. The maximum building height of 30 feet is permitted for this site, according to zoning. The proposed building would have a height of 64 feet, 10 inches to the roof, and 75 feet, 10 inches to the top of the stair elevator tower, well over double the zoning height. The building would have an east-side yard setback of 3.9 feet. A minimum setback of 25 feet is required since the adjacent property to the east is zoned one-family residential. Dwellings in the Central Business District zoning must provide 1.5 off-street parking spaces per dwelling. With 59 dwellings proposed, the development would require 89 parking spaces. There are only 61 parking spaces identified on the site plan. According to zoning, portions of the building over 40 feet in height must be stepped back a minimum of 15 feet for, for any right-of-way. A 15-foot step back would require, would be required on the building's fifth, sixth, and seventh levels, but none are provided. Screening in the form of a six-foot landscape buffer or masonry wall is required along the east-side lot line, since, again, the adjacent property to the east is residentially zoned. No screening is proposed along this lot line on the site plan. Why modify or waive a required landscaping buffer? Perhaps it is because the proposed building is so large that there isn't room. In closing, I would like to say that I understand the Planning Commission can override the zoning restrictions on this site. My question is why? These zoning regulations were created for a reason, to protect and enhance the beauty and harmonious nature of our city. Thank you so much. And I'm sorry I ran over a couple of seconds.
All right. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, Katie Wook, 1623 North Pleasant Street. I am strongly in support of this building. I've known about this project for a little while, and it's very exciting. The majority affordable units in this building is exactly what Royal Oak needs. We need more affordable units downtown. We need workforce housing. And the fewer parking spaces that this building is proposing is great for downtown. I've said in this meeting, and I'll say it again in this meeting, I have a family of three. We have one car and a bike. This building has a bike storage room. These people who live here might be walking to their jobs downtown or at other local places. I'll echo what my colleague Alex said. If we can't build affordable housing here, right across from City Hall, where else can we build it? This is a perfect project to show Royal Oak's commitment to affordable housing and to be welcoming to everyone. Thank you.
Right up here in front.
My name is Trish Oliver. Lived in Royal Oak almost 40 years. This building at Knowles and Third Street is just too tall and too big for the site. Six stories next to some very beautiful, highly manicured, single-family homes on the south side of Third Street is really sad. And the fact that that sixth-floor wall is sheer with no setback is also very sad, not optimum. I think it's important to note that the AMI, which is around $80,000, really applies to someone who lives in Royal Oak, works in Royal Oak, or maybe they work in West Bloomfield or Birmingham. But somebody who lives in Detroit or Oak Park or Hazel Park, they are not making $80,000. They may be driving here and they're making an average of $40,000. So they won't be able to live in this building. And somebody who's working in Royal Oak and staying at a homeless center definitely won't be able to afford living here. So it's a flawed argument to, you know, provide variances for a building that's too tall and too big for the lot and will adversely affect the adjacent single-family homes. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Come on up.
My name's Rick Vian. I live across the street from this proposed building. I live at 418 East Third Street, Earth Third Street. I've been there for about 30 years. And I realize I live in the city, and I like living here, and I like the things that have been going on. And I have not been, had a problem with the development around here. I've been very impressed, and I've liked, I've enjoyed seeing this building go up, and the courthouse, and the police station, and the Centennial Park is fantastic. When they were proposing it, I came to a meeting and I suggested that they have ice skating in the winter, and I was pretty excited to see that happen. I have watched this parking lot for almost 30 years now. And it is not unused. It's used all the time. Right now, it's being used by the lighting installers. It's being used as an adjunct to the ice rink. Some equipment is there. It's being used for the festivals. And the festivals do not bother me. If my next-door neighbors, if they bother them, maybe it's because they're transient people. They don't live there very long, six months or a year. I'm here for the long term, and I enjoy the festivals. In fact, I allow the Taco Festival and the Winter Festival to block our driveway for the duration. And I park over on Knowles so that they can have their, what do they call that? Zip line. And right at my driveway. And it's entertaining to watch the people come off the zip line from our dining room table. It's a great place, and I think, I, I didn't have a problem with the parking situation. A lot of people thought, well, if you do all this building, we're going to wreck the farmer's market. I didn't think you would. I think, I thought you would have enough parking here for the farmer's market, and you apparently do. Things are working really well. They're using that lot. It's nice to have that space there. And if, if that is, if goes away, then all of this activity that goes on there is going to have to go somewhere else. There's too much parking pressure already, and this is just going to add to it. If you've got that many units, you're going to have almost twice that many cars. The entrance to the parking lot, the parking structure underneath that building is right across from my house. And the main thing that I'm, it's aesthetics and functionality. I don't think the area is going to function the way it is. And aesthetically, I think you're just going to take this beautiful, perfect area, the way it's functioning now, and you're going to wreck it if you vote for this. And I would not want to be one of the people on the commission panel who voted to wreck this area that way. So I really hope you turn this down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on the special land use? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Bring it back to the side of the table. As a reminder to the petitioner, you do have the option to postpone the action tonight since we do not have a full commission. Just want to, I guess, give you that opportunity right now to let us know if you want us to continue or not.
I appreciate that option. We do have some time-sensitive matters as we pursue the development. So if you don't mind, we, we would like to ask for a formal vote tonight.
Then that's what we will do. All right, back to the side of the table. Questions, concerns, comments, motions?
Just the low-hanging fruit on the audible for the door. I think it's a bad idea facing the residences. Every time that door opens, they're going to hear a bell outside. It's not. I live by the fire station. I hear the trucks all the time.
But that's in the site plan.
That would be in the site plan, yes, sorry.
Any other comments, questions, a motion? Again, just on the special land use? Is that a wait, or do, oh, sorry, Commissioner Douglas.
I'll move approval of the special land use.
Is there a second?
There is.
Second by Mr. Esbury, sorry. Get, motion by Mr. Douglas. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? So motion on the tables, Commissioner Douglas has approved the special land use. Second by Mr. Esbury. God, I keep getting them wrong, sorry. We'll go to the vote. Ms. Cooper? Mr. Esbury?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So the special land use is approved. So now on to the site plan. Commissioner Douglas?
Just a quick comment. I, I would not want the brick on this building to match the municipal buildings. I think it's important to differentiate between functions, and I think that coloration helps people understand that difference. So that's just a passing comment. Mr. Ellison?
No, I just, I was going for the, for the unification factor.
I get it.
Because we did cut, we have comments about how so beautiful in that area, and then all of a sudden, we've got this building that's different. So I was just trying to mitigate that, just by putting the accent brick to match the other ones. But it, you know, it's their choice. It's building, they can make it whatever color they want.
So, and I'll, and I'll further say that, and I think Mr. Murphy said this earlier today, one of the principles of height in downtowns is that you want your higher buildings in the center of your downtown, grade gradually getting lower as you go out. This does not adhere to that principle. But we've approved a much taller building than this on this site in the past. And the, the necessity of, as I'm, I'm told, having enough units to make this project work financially steers me in the direction of supporting it. At the city commission table and in discussions throughout Royal Oak and the state of Michigan, there is a desperate need for housing and a desperate need for workforce housing. And for us to, for the city of Royal Oak to take an initiative like this and provide the workforce housing that we've been talking about for so long in one fell swoop, I think honors our city. And I think the site plan that is proposed here, assuming we can meet the right-of-way, that right-of-way issue is very suitable.
Let's see, what other people say?
And again, with, with changing that right-of-way issue now, so it sounds like we have some modifications that are on the table with regards to openings on the face of the building or things that might change?
I guess I would, I mean, if I were making a motion, where do we have, number two would be obtained approvals regarding the proposed amount of all openings. Well, once they get the right-of-way approval, they, then they can get the approval? Mr. Murphy, do we need to specify the, because it might not be a right-of-way, it might be another accommodation?
The wording is open-ended enough to allow for, what we believe are those three available options to them. Flat wall building, that'd be less than desirable. Set the building back, modified footprint of the building, or the city commission granting the dedication of the right-of-way, therefore solving their issue of the openings. And as it's shown, would then comply and wouldn't need any modifications to the design as shown.
Well worded.
I've got a couple of comments that I'd like to make in general. So I understand that this is an economically challenging building. I do appreciate the fact that the, the finish is being designed and aren't necessarily being degraded to try to make the building work. However, I do need to make the comment that there is an awful lot of flat-roof space up there that is perfect for renewables. And I bring that up because the most vulnerable members of our community are the ones that could benefit the most from something like that. I don't know how the economics of this building work, but I imagine the operations of the building will be passed along either directly or indirectly to all the residents. So I would like to encourage you to consider the inclusion of that in the design. Certainly doesn't change anything that we're looking at from a site plan perspective. Also want to mention that I appreciate you including the solar study in the packet that we received. I know the height of the building is something that's been up for discussion. So to get a good understanding of how that building will affect its surrounding properties because of its height was definitely helpful in, in my review of the project. Those are all the comments I've got. Is there a motion?
Other people have that, is that all of you?
I don't think I do.
Uh, you, it's not you.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I will offer a motion if I could, Chair Two. Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve the site plan with the contingencies as listed by staff. And Mr. Murphy, you feel comfortable enough with number two as written to give you the flexibility you need for your options. Adding a contingency, requesting a visual-only alarm. I happen to agree with my colleague here that a audio alarm could prove to be obnoxious. And you already have that in your plan anyways, don't you? So adding the visual alarm for the Wesley door, should you be able to achieve the public right-of-way that you'll be pursuing. That's my motion.
Do you want visuals on both doors?
Yeah, that's, as shown, that's perfect.
I'll second.
All right. So, motion by Mr. Esbury, second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Esbury?
Yeah, my only discussion would be, I've sat at this table for a long, long time, and not this term, I've only been on for a handful of months, but previously, to have an opportunity like this to really put our money where our mouth is in terms of affordable housing and bringing this opportunity to Royal Oak, I think is, hopefully will be a feather in everybody's cap.
Thank you. All right, the creative... All right, the correct vote. Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Esbury?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellison?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So, site plan has been approved. Congratulations. We hope you hear back from the states.
Recede. We'll get a recess.
So we're going to take a quick five-minute break. All right, we got everyone back, so we're going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting and move on to our next agenda item. Item 4D, site plan approval at 505 South Lafayette, parcel number 25-21-277-001. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. The site is located on Lafayette at the Fifth Street walkway in the city's central business zoning district. It's improved with a vacant one-story commercial building, and the petitioner is seeking site plan approval to build a 10-story building that contains ground level, a ground-level retail space with amenities for the 54 residential units on the upper floors. The site, and the best way to show that is this image that they provided. The site has frontage on public right-of-ways on three sides and private property on the south side. So, to the south is a private piece of property that's developed with a daycare facility. It fronts along South Lafayette, as well as a 20-foot-wide, two-way public alley that separates it from the businesses that front on Washington. And of course, we have on the north side, the Fifth Street walkway, which is still public The ground floor, as noted, the ground floor area has a retail, has a tenant, commercial tenant space, I should say, that has a small entryway off of South Lafayette and a large glass facade that fronts onto that Fifth Street walkway. The majority of the rest of the ground floor plan is associated with the operational aspects of the residential, for the residential units. There is a transformer, and I'll zoom in on that, transformer that's located on the backside of the property along the public alley. There also is an entry door, and there is an overhead door to get to what they refer to as BOH, or back-of-house, things like refuse containers, compactor, dumpster, recyclables, what have you, for deliveries as well. Floors 2 through 10 provide six units each, and we'll look at their floor plan. It's, again, it's replicated on each of the floors from 10 through, excuse me, 2 through 10. So, six units each floor resulting in 54 total units. There are 36 one-bedroom units and 18 two-bedroom units. As we had discussed in the previous case, the zoning ordinance makes reference to a tiered effect. As we get closer to the center of downtown, the building suggested height is taller. As we get closer to the outskirts adjacent to nearby single-family neighboring residential neighborhoods, the suggested height is lower. The maximum height under that strict provision of the ordinance, and again, you have the flexibility, but under that strict provision is 125 feet in height. This building measures 150 and a half feet to the roofline, so it's below that maximum, that suggested maximum height. There is a patio area, and we'll look at the, on the upper floor. There's a covered portion and uncovered portion. It's accessed by stairs and two elevator shafts. The question I think I would ask the petitioner, which isn't highlighted here, is whether the rooftop space is dedicated to strictly the residential or the commercial or both. It may be a relevant question that you may want to consider. As we discussed in the previous case, any building that's cited at the property line, once it goes up to the 40-foot mark, the ordinance has a recommendation that any floors above and beyond 40 feet step in 15 feet to have sort of a cake effect, a tiered effect, if you will. Again, that's, that's a suggestion. The planning commission has complete discretion over that. The proposed building is a flat facade all the way from the ground floor to the top of the roof parapet. The Downtown Development Authority and the City Commission have both discussed and reviewed design concepts for modifications to the Fifth Street walkway. The petitioner is proposing to utilize that walkway, just like it is now, and I'll refer to the, I think they have a good rendering, or rather, a good photograph in their packet. But right now, that public alley that bifurcates the properties that front on Washington versus those that front along South Lafayette, there's a 20-foot-wide alley in this, along this segment. And that spine of an alley leads either from Sixth Street to Fifth, and so, delivery vehicles and what have you currently can and will continue to be able to drive north or south on the alley and go through the walkway. That's a limited time in which vehicles do that. For this particular use, there are no off-street parking spaces, so there's no parking within the building. They're going to have a pretty limited amount of vehicles, delivery, refuse. Then if you had a development that had parking on site, there would be far more traffic. So the, again, the DDA and the City Commission have both reviewed design concepts for modifications to this walkway. Their development doesn't impact it whatsoever. The design modifications were to allow it as, to continue to be able to accommodate delivery vehicles and emergency vehicles. They are proposing a canopy along a portion of the, and there's a better view of the existing walkway, which does again allow for travel of vehicles. They are proposing a canopy that wraps around the building along Lafayette and extends into Fifth Street. We don't have any concerns with regard to the presence of that and the functionality of the walkway to continue to accommodate vehicles. As noted, the site does not provide any of the parking spaces that are required per the ordinance, that one and a half spaces per unit. The zoning board of appeals, the petitioner did approach the zoning board of appeal several months ago, and the zoning board of appeals waived all of the required parking. So the zoning board of appeals has granted the necessary variance. And the planning commission does have recommended, has recommended specific contingencies for you. They're fairly minor in nature.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Esbury?
Yes. I have a couple of questions for our esteemed attorney. As you heard at the beginning of public comment, the ZBA took a pretty good beating from a handful of speakers. In your opinion, did the ZBA act in any way that was inappropriate or outside of the bounds of what they should have done?
This was reviewed within our office and know the ZBA's decision was appropriate for their vote.
And would it be appropriate for this body to kick the can down the road so we could show up at the next ZBA meeting with our baseball bats and brass knuckles to compel them to reconsider this?
It would not be appropriate for this body to attempt to circumvent the ZBA in any way.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy or our attorney? No? Okay. With that, then, I will, this is just a site plan review, does not require a public hearing. However, keeping with tradition and transparency, we will invite anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item to come up and, oh, I'm sorry. I'm actually going to invite the petitioner to come up and present the project. Getting everything out of order, I apologize. I'm not practiced at this.
It's been a long night.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, I'm Dennis Cowan of Plunkett Cooney, and I am here on behalf of McCurry Group of Royal Oak LLC. And I know it's been a long evening, and I hope we've saved the best for last. And with that, I would like to introduce our team. First of all, our leader, Jim McCurry, who, this has been a real passion project for him and for his family. Jason Krieger is our architect of record, and also Eric Wilson, who is from Tower Construction is here. So we've got the whole, complete team to answer any questions you may have. We're pleased to present this outstanding project to you this evening. And as has been mentioned, it's site plan only, and quite frankly, that's a relief because I'm usually here with special land use, conditional, PUD, or whatever, in order to advance the cause here in Royal Oak and keep our economic development on a upward path. Interestingly, this project meets or exceeds all requirements for a new building in the downtown. We have a couple, as has been mentioned, discretionary items, but I will tell you, this is the shortest staff report I've seen in 25 years. And maybe 35 if you go back for the years that I was on the other side of the, of the table. So, it's very brief, and that is good because we've worked really hard to meet all the requirements for this project. I would just note that with respect to the building height and the setback, and you just handled that with the last structure over here across the street, that that has been approved for such newer buildings in downtown, such as the Fifth, which is right near this project, had the Henry Ford Building, the Jonah Building, Hyatt Place, and the Icon Building. So, we would be in good company, and we ask you to please approve the plan for the building as is presented in terms of the mass and height. As was mentioned, the ZBA did grant a variance for parking, so that's not an issue today. We need no accommodation from the planning commission. This is a building that will meet ADA requirements and also has two elevators. Many buildings in Royal Oak, the multifamily, don't have any elevators, so we're very pleased to have that in this building, and certainly it makes common sense. This project will be a significant addition to our downtown. It will add, we believe, an exclamation point for redevelopment of Lafayette from Sixth Street to 11 Mile, which has probably been 20 to 25 years in the making. I remember looking down that street, and it wasn't pretty. There were a couple of open parking lots, there were very small buildings, buildings that had, some of them had seen their better days. We also have, of course, the iconic Stage Crafters right next door, which was restored, the former Washington Theater. We have a brand-new building at the corner of Fourth and 11, as well as they, I'm sorry, Fourth and Lafayette. Fourth and Lafayette, as well as the adjacent Royal Oak Music Theater. So really, this area has been redeveloped, but also retained some historic buildings with respect to the two theaters. So we're, we're very pleased to join this august company on Lafayette. There has been a lot of public, private, and institutional investment, and we seek to add to that investment. So at this time, I'm going to invite Jason Krieger to come up and give you the particulars on the building, and then answer and respond to any inquiries you may have.
Thank you. Good evening, Jason Krieger. We have a brief presentation to run through. Joseph already kind of touched on some of the items, but I'll see if I can elaborate on anything that's new. So that's the site there in red, it's right at the corner of Lafayette and Fifth. One thing that was mentioned was the potential redevelopment of Fifth Avenue, basically through there, and we're very excited about that, and our hope is that something does occur, and we would like to work with the DDA and support them in any way and see that as a future benefit for this development. There are power poles, maybe go to, go to the site plan, Joseph? Oh, there you go. So there are existing power poles there. We have not finalized discussions with DTE on that, but we have started that. And the plan will be, which we have to handle that in some way, whether it's burying them, whatever. So that is something that we're working through, and we, you know, we will take care of that and make sure that it's, it's handled and it won't be a hindrance on the project. Go to the next slide, please. So this is the site plan that was mentioned. You know, right now, we have the canopy that's proposed that goes out towards the west and the north. There was a comment in the staff report that talks about making sure that it does not impede anything with, I think, Fifth Avenue, and the answer there is absolutely. You know, we're happy to work with staff and see what's coming down the pipe and what we need to do to adjust that, whether it's on the west or the east. We just wanted an accent, but that looked really nice. As mentioned and shown earlier, Mr. Corey's planning on putting a bistro. He's got a really cool concept in mind, but putting a bistro on the corner there would be really special, great, something that the residents in this building could enjoy, as well as folks walking by. That's the idea, is to create a cool little neighborhood vibe, and that's why there's all the glass along, along Fifth Avenue, so that, you know, you get that interaction of the street. So this is a true mixed-use building. You know, it's going to not just have residents living there, but, but hopefully, people coming and going, you know, all day and just enjoying it. A neat concept that we have, you can see in the pink on the lower left, that's our common area, lobby, little lounge. And right in the middle, there are doors that go to the light blue, which is the bistro. So there could be some form of, you know, like, you go, go get, have, you know, order food or whatever. So it's something that is very easy to get to and really help to support that bistro and also the folks who live here. As mentioned, all the back of house is off the alleyway, so that worked out really nice for us. We do have a small basement, which would just house some utilities. This site is very, very small, obviously, so we had to be creative with how we utilize it. Plus, as we were developing it, you know, this is a high-rise, so we had to give up some space for a fire command center and other things. So we had, it took many, many iterations to get this thing packaged together, and we still have a few things we have to work through. If we can go, maybe go to one of the renderings really quick. Oh, actually, so typical plans, we just talked about that, simple corridor off the elevators, and then we're capitalizing on the corners, which are really nice units, some cool units in the middle, and then we have the smaller units on the end. Go to the renderings, please. Actually, go back one, because you asked, you asked a question about the rooftop patio. Residents only. That's it. It's not for the general public. So here's our elevation. As mentioned, the studs go straight out. What we are doing is we're breaking up this facade. We have cast stone, which is a very high-end material on the first couple floors. We're transitioning it with a nice detail, you know, so we're breaking up that banding. So you have the base, the shaft, and then the very top, which is a nice light metal. So we are transitioning these materials as you go up. It's a very tall building, it's 10 stories, but we're taking brick up on the three facades, almost all the way up. So again, Mr. Corey's going, this is like a generational, this is a legacy piece for him. So it's something that, you know, he's going to give to his family, so we want this to be really nice and look beautiful many, many years down the road. So by doing, to do that is, you know, you want to get timeless materials, and that's the proposal here. There is the south elevation because we have but a property line right there. Because we have but the property line, right now, that's just showing the CMU, and, you know, there are a few buildings in town that have similar conditions. And so what we would look to do is maybe add some banding or do something a little bit more decorative in there, so it's not just a blank wall, because we have no idea when or if the daycare center is going to, you know, be taken down and built up.
I was going to suggest, how about a mural?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're all, we're all ears, really, you know, to see, yeah, yep. But something that just doesn't look just like, I remember when I was on the DDA, there was conversation about, at Christmas time, showing like movies and stuff on the Fifth. I remember that, but I don't know if the Fifth faces a different direction, but something that looks nice, and it's not just a blank wall. So, so we have, we have some thinking to do on that, but that's going to be our goal. And do we have any other? Oh, I mean, this is a great image. I mean, you know, active, true activation of the street. It's not just the lobby. We have the bistro and the main lobby entrance together, so that, that's the main corner. And, you know, the hope is that you see people there all the time getting coffee or whatever's going on. So I think we talked about the setbacks. As mentioned, there are many buildings that do the same thing where they go straight up. You know, to, to put any kind of setback in this building would just cripple any kind of apartments you could do up above it. That's how small the site is. So, and that's what we have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Oh, yep. Yep, we have to remind you of the fact that we do not have a full commission tonight, so you do have the option of postponing the decision tonight.
As they say in NASA, we're a go.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, with that, this is just a site plan review, does not require a public hearing, but we will allow members from the public that do wish to make a comment to speak their minds. So is there anyone that would like to speak about this project tonight? Ma'am? That one over here? Yep, right there.
Nancy Poprovsky, thank you for having the public hearing, so I could add to this. It's not a matter of law. It's not a matter of requirement. It's been waived to have parking on-site by the ZBA. So you say parking doesn't matter. Well, it does matter. Anyone should be ashamed, especially if a relative has special needs. Shame on anyone for dismissing any challenged person and not including them in your plans. I hope none of you ever are confined due to health, but if you are, maybe then you'll get a heart. I hope that you take this into consideration. I'm not used to living in this kind of Royal Oak. This is not what I ever saw when I first moved here. I saw compassion and love for our neighbor. Please continue this and don't let this happen. Happy holidays and thank you.
I believe there was a hand that was up back there. Yep.
I know some of you. Gail Von Staden and I, along with my husband, Tomasz, live and work at 504 South Washington Avenue, a building that we purchased in 2013 and renovated to house Citizen Yoga, Rail & Anchor, our architecture firm, Von Staden Architects, and our loft condo. We are all celebrating 11 years here this year, and we're going strong. For the record, I am not here to express opposition to the geometry of the proposed building at 505 South Lafayette, although it will impede the sunset views that we've enjoyed for the last 11 years. We encourage you to evaluate this project in relation to the Planning Commission's charter to support sound community development, where intentional collective actions improve social, economic, physical, and environmental well-being while preserving valuable aspects of the culture of Royal Oak. The sixth and Lafayette structure is relied upon by retailers and businesses from the railroad tracks to West Street, from Fourth to Seventh. It is the engine that makes this neighborhood run, a neighborhood that thrives on independent retailers and restaurateurs who are willing to take risks, create vibe, and be unique. This board must prioritize developments that support the existing fabric of our city. The ZBA ruling to eliminate the requirement for this development to meet the parking requirements outlined in the zoning ordinance, in our opinion, strains retailers and their patrons by making parking more difficult, more remote, and more disparate. Within our micro neighborhood, our lived experiences differ from the petitioner's shared findings regarding parking and its availability, those findings that were shared with the ZBA. And what about when that old Imagine8 restaurant reopens to be something new and is attracting hundreds of people at the same time that the Royal Oak Music Theater has an event and the same day that Stagecrafters has an event? The parking will be strained, and all the retail furniture in Washington is full. When that will happen, and the parking on this end of town will be severely strained. Does the board wish to support the precedent set by the ZBA for the convenience of a real estate developer at the peril of current and future entrepreneurial, independent retailers and business owners who are truly the heart of this city?
Anyone else wish to speak? Back there in the corner.
Good evening. My name is Frank Hobrest. I own that building that's a couple of hundred feet to the north. I own the old Kresge AMP building. Used to be AMP in there also. My tenants are telling me that they're parking on the third floor, and my neighbor is absolutely correct. Imagine8's closed. My neighbor, Tessian, they just lost a 20,000-square-foot tenant. Okay, we're in a downtime. What's going to happen when your beloved Stagecrafters has an event? And if we listen to the proposed developer, let them go somewhere else. Park at the Fourth Street and park in front of the First of America lot, parking deck. You going to tell those people, predominantly older people that patronize Stagecrafters, you going to tell them, go up the block? It's only three, four blocks. It's good for you. My mother is in a wheelchair. Do you really expect my mother to, that I would have to push her down the street, especially when it's snowing or rain? I really look at good days to bring my mother to downtown Royal Oak because she's in a wheelchair, and if we go sightseeing, we limit our bad days. We have an opportunity to address some parking. There should be some parking. Mr. Krieger, who was there, or his partner was there at the Board of Appeals, and that's convenient, on the previous project, they have ADA parking. Where's the ADA parking for someone that's going to live in this building? Well, it's across the street. You got to go up the sidewalk, you got to cross the street, you got to come back down the sidewalk, and then you get to enter the deck. There is no ADA parking in this building, and that's a problem. If my mother were to live there, I could not get her into a car under a covered scenario. It takes a long time for me to get my mother in a car. We need to think about tomorrow's tomorrow, not just today, not just next year. We need to think about where we want to be. My Kresge building is 100 years old. Where do we want to be in 100 years from now? Thank you.
Any other comments, Ms. Wook?
Hi, Katie Wook, 1623 North Pleasant Street. YIMBY Oakland County has already spoken in favor of this project at the Zoning Board of Appeals, so I'll keep my comments short. I do just want to point out that the downtown parking assessment from 2023 showed that at a peak on a Saturday evening, this parking garage was 40% empty. I think this is a great project. These people are going to have a place to park. These people will also be able to walk and cycle all over downtown Royal Oak, just like many other people do who don't live directly downtown. Thank you.
All right, anyone else right here in front of me?
Concerned residents at Protect Royal Oak are very concerned about the reputation of the city as a caring and inclusive community, but not at the expense of seniors, the disabled, or other marginalized groups. This project at 505 South Lafayette, which unprecedentedly waived the entire parking requirement, is not, you know, accessible or friendly to seniors or the disabled, either in terms of living there or visiting. We must remember that neither seniors nor the disabled embrace bikes, scooters, or buses as a primary means of transportation and will continue to rely on their cars. The remedy is for you all on the Planning Commission to send this back to the ZBA for reconsideration per statute MCL 125.3604, which states that the ZBA can reverse its own ruling. We want to, you know, we do question why the architect partner was on the ZBA who approved this project, and now the other partner is now representing this project. That seems like a conflict of interest, and it's not in the best interests of Royal Oak residents. So please do the right thing and deny this project. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment. Bring it back to this side for any questions. Do they have a chance to answer? All right, if not, I will actually turn it over to the petitioner to give you an opportunity to address any of the comments that were made, any other information you'd like to give about the project.
I don't, you know, will answer any questions, but have no, nothing to comment on. I think we've made a full and complete presentation.
All right, thank you. Anyone over here? Mr. Esbry?
Yeah, I'd like to just make one brief comment. In addressing all of you who spoke to the parking, the reality is, the ZBA did what they did. They are an autonomous board, and they have the authority to make the decisions that they made. What this body happens to think about that decision, unfortunately or fortunately, is irrelevant. This body is looking at a simple site plan that has been presented to us, and the parking variance, as popular or unpopular as it may be, is not up for this body's consideration, which is why I asked our city attorney to address the fact, can we circumvent, go around, compel, do whatever to the ZBA to change their decision? And the answers are resounding no. So at this point, we are considering a simple site plan, and that is what is in front of us at this point in time.
So I guess following up on that, in looking specifically at the site plan, I think it is a difficult site to work with. It's in a, you know, a core downtown area. The fact that it's providing housing, I think, is a benefit. And when you look at the specific plan itself, there's many elements that I think will lend itself to being a better building for the tenants, specifically referring to the bike storage that's there, the separate package room, a separate storage area for the tenants. They seem like minor things, but these are all tenant amenities that actually make a building better to live in. I do have a question for the petitioner with reference to the, I see the concierge desk that's listed on that first-floor plan. Is the plan for this building to be, essentially have someone at that servicing it 24/7?
Yes, 24. Yeah, the answer is yes.
So somebody can man the door, take orders, all that kind of stuff.
Okay. So again, I think that's another amenity that speaks to the, the design of this building. From a safety perspective, you're always going to have someone at the front door. I think with a difficult site, they did a good job with developing a good plan.
Yeah, I'm especially fond of the Market Bistro there along the Fourth, the Fifth Street alley. I think you're going to do a land office business of people from Stagecrafters who, you know... you know, want to get a soda or a sandwich or yogurt or whatever. And I think it's going to lend to placemaking, the glass front along there with the improvements that the DDA is planning to more beautify that alley. I think it's going to make it a real kind of center of activity in this corner of town. In terms of the height of the building, that horse has left the barn with the Baker College Development, with the Baldwin Fly Loft, with the Fifth around the corner. We've talked earlier tonight about height and how height belongs ideally in the center of the downtown, and here we have exactly that happening with the parking deck across the street, screening it from, you know, residential on West Street. I mean, I just think this is not just suitable, but an asset.
Mr. Esbry?
Yeah, I'd like to offer a motion to approve Site Plan 241219 with the seven contingencies as recommended by staff.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Ellison? Any discussion?
I think it's been said.
Okay. Before we take a vote, I do feel compelled to make one final comment with regards to all of that flat roof area that is not an amenity that would benefit from having renewables. I know you probably couldn't fit a ton on there, but any part of the building operations that you can supply through renewables is that much less that has to be supplied from the grid or other sources. So I would highly encourage you to look into it. There are ways where you can do it economically, and this is another great opportunity to do that, so I would hate for it to be passed up. With that, we'll go to the vote. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Esbry?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ellison?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So congratulations, site plan is approved. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 5, Other Business Non-Action Items. Mr. Murphy, if you want to address the...
Those are simply publications that are available for your review. No actions needed.
All right, okay, thank you.
What are called non-action items?
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move adjourned.
Moved by Mr. Cooper, seconded by Mr. Ellison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. And we do...
Yes.
Cool.